Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's planning board hearings. Before we get started, we start every meeting with public comments. So if you, if anybody's here that has any comments or questions about anything that does not reflect any of the hearings that were about to be presented in front of us, just raise your hand. You can come to the podium, and we can hear you speak. Yes, sir? We can just hear your name and address.
Yeah. My name is Steve Callahan. I live at 824 Birch Pick Road in North Hampton. And what I'm here to ask the committee to look at and reconsider is the vote that you took on the 28th of July.
This, sir, this is-
This is the continuing, this is the continuing process that began two or three years ago.
Understood.
Every meeting was not identified-
Sir, I just said, if you have something that has nothing to do with the hearings that we're about to talk about, feel free, but this does. And so, we can hear your, take your comments later, but we can't listen to them.
Okay, so we, we can discuss this later. We're not going to say, oh, we're going to be limited only to the-
We're happy to hear your comments. This, right now, this part of the meeting is for other comments.
As long as we're going to be able to speak.
You're good.
Okay? And is that going to be just prior to the hearing?
I'm sorry?
When will that be? Just prior to the eight o'clock on the shirt?
No, when it starts at eight o'clock, there'll be, there'll be a public comment.
Thank you.
So, just for those who are unfamiliar with the process, when we open up the hearing, there'll be a presentation, typically, there's a presentation, there's some back and forth from the board, then we'll open it up to public discussion. And at that time, anybody who has comments can come to the podium, and we'll hear, we'll gladly hear your comments, then it'll return back to the board, we'll have further discussion, and if we have enough information, make a motion. If not, we can continue, or we did have different options. So, with that being said, any other comments that aren't relative to the hearings that we have in front of us tonight? So, with seeing that, we will start with our, our first hearing was for a major site plan for 10 Holly Street, but we're going to continue that?
Yeah, so you, the, this project was continued from the last meeting because the applicant did not have a stormwater permit from DPW at that point. There were some technical issues on the consultant side, and we're not able to get information to DPW, so they've asked to continue to the November 14th meeting at seven o'clock to give them, you know, another couple of weeks to get that stormwater design ironed out.
So, we need a motion to continue?
Right, to November 14th, and to a specific time, and I wouldn't recommend seven p.m., but-
Seven o'clock, okay.
Do we move the Holly Street project to November 14th at seven?
Second. Second. Any discussion? All of them. Crazy. That's it, sorry. So, we're going to continue that, and then jump into our next item of business, which is for seven o'clock, proposed zoning map amendment to rezone parcels on East Hampton Road and Texas Road from GI to OI, and rezone two parcels from GI to FFR, and Carolyn has those up on the screen.
Yeah, so what you have in your packet, and what is on the screen, is a proposal to change, to rezone, which is a map change, so changing the zoning district from general industrial zone to office industrial, all along East Hampton Road and Texas Road. So, a couple of years ago, there was a map change that you all recommended to City Council, City Council adopted it, to rezone a couple of parcels on the southern end of East Hampton Road from general industrial to office industrial. And then, you may remember, there was that petition for the climate-controlled self-storage project, it's allowed in office industrial. So, that, self-storage is allowed in office industrial, so that you approved the project on the heels of that map change. Throughout the city, we've been looking at rezoning the area outside the industrial park to office industrial, allows a little more flexibility, particularly in the redevelopment of the older mill buildings. You all have had conversations about keeping the general industrial district for the industrial park, because it doesn't allow residential, also allows higher-volume warehousing, which is appropriate in that location, because it's right by the interstate exit. And you wouldn't likely see those kinds of uses in town, or in this location, or in Leeds. A few, actually, maybe a month ago, you reviewed a zoning map change in Leeds to change general industrial to office industrial for the remaining parcels of Leeds. So, this is sort of following on the heels of that. It happens to be many more parcels, because this is just sort of ring, or straddles East Hampton Road for the most part. There are two parcels in this stretch that are conservation parcels, that we've been simultaneously, or subsequent to acquiring open space for conservation purposes, we've been rezoning those map, those lots, out of whatever their underlying zoning is, to a farm, forest, and rivers zone, which just really is more indicative about what's allowed and not allowed. We don't want to have a general industrial zone on a conservation parcel, because it's never going to be developed. So, that's included in this rezoning as well. Those are, that's the parcel that was just a leftover piece that we've more recently acquired, just in the last couple of months. So, because it's in this vicinity, we're proposing, staff proposed, that we go ahead and map those to farms, forest, and rivers. So, that's it, in a nutshell, basically, it shows that linkage there along East Hampton Road, and then up on the northern part is the Texas Road piece. But this goes all the way down to the East Hampton border.
The, the Texas Road, which was just a funky road, so what was driving that? Was it to bring it in line with the zoning for the lots around it, or was it to, just specifically targeted to allow that?
So, the Texas Road parcels are all general industrial as well. So, we just thought it made sense that even though it's, it's not entirely contiguous with the East Hampton Road piece, it's sort of the last bit on this portion of the city that still's own general industrial. So, it's really just to go ahead and make that change.
Is this, do we need the public participation on this, or?
Yeah, so, so, the charge for the planning board, the planning board and City Council have to hold public hearings for any zoning amendments, and this is a zoning amendment, this is a change to the map. So, the planning board holds a public hearing, takes comment, makes a recommendation to City Council. City Council holds a separate public hearing, and I believe that's scheduled for November And then, once the City Council closes its public hearing, they make a recommendation to the full City Council as well, and then it goes to full City Council.
Any questions by the board?
Would you remind us what the difference is between the two, or did you decide spacing up when you earlier said just that?
I didn't. The only one I mentioned was that the warehousing, sort of heavy warehousing, uses are allowed in general industrial, but not in office industrial. On the flip side, in office industrial, there are uses that are not allowed in GI, such as self-storage units. We also allow residential use above the first floor in office industrial, so you can have live-work space, or just simply residential units above a first-floor commercial space.
In OI?
In OI, but not in general industrial.
So, in OI, we can do commercial with a residential above, but not in GI, which is what these are in now?
Right. The other element that provides more flexibility in office industrial, which probably is not so relevant in this scenario, is, there's more flexibility for the reuse of older mill buildings for restaurant and entertainment uses as a means to, so the buildings have to be older than 1939, I think is what the zoning says. So, that, there aren't any of those in this area, but that's another difference between office industrial and general industrial. And otherwise, the uses are the same. So, they're very similar districts, except for those specific-
So, OI gives you a little more flexibility, I'd say, like, than-
Right.
Can you do, can you do what this, like, the sort of fake commercial space at the bottom, like, it will be the first, the first little bit, and then the whole, everything else could be residential?
I wouldn't refer to it as safe.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Temper, temper commercial space?
No, in this case, it really does have to be the first floor of the whole thing. Because it's not about creating activity on the street, more than just, we want to preserve as much back office and kind of workspace and opportunities that we can. So, the whole point is really, we want it to be mostly industrial uses, but if, if there are compatibilities between residential and that particular use on the first floor, then why not let someone live above their, you know, workshop or something?
So, do you, and do you stop, do, if something actually built to them to push sidewalks from that thing?
So, this is not about the development standards, it's just about things, uses allowed. So, the same rules would apply for any new development across the board, no matter what district it's in.
So, Carolyn, you mentioned that a lot about renovating old mill buildings, but for instance, on Texas Road, there's a lot of undeveloped land, so if somebody come in and build a, a new building there, that was for entertainment or restaurant?
Restaurant uses are allowed by special permit in the office industrial district, but it can only be a percentage of a building, it can't just be a street. But things like, if you had a brew, a brewery, or a distillery, you could have a small restaurant space, or tasting room, or something like that, that would be allowed there. The interesting thing about Texas Road is that there are longstanding national-grade utility businesses, that really restrict where you can build there. So, a lot of it is not buildable anyway, because of the seasons.
And certainly along the river, too, so-
Right. So, really, only the portions of those where there are already existing buildings, and maybe a little bit more could be reused or rebuilt.
Any other comments or questions by the board? So, we can open this up to the public. Does anyone in the public have any comments regarding this issue? No? Okay.
Will we close the period?
Second discussion. All in favor? So, we need a recommendation to approve this, so choose and move it forward to City Council to-
Move that we, I move that we modify the parcels listed with 7:00 p.m. agenda meeting. There's a lot of them. So, City Zoning Map Amendment 353.4, that we rezone as recommended.
So, there's that one, and then there's the next, if you have your agenda.
And then I'd also move that we modify the City Zoning Map to rezone the fourth of the map, 3749, 4439, from general industrial to farm, farms, forests, groups.
Second, motion, second by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor? About to say something?
I was. Instead, you're voting.
Okay, so that's moving on. Our next hearing is at officially 7:30.
I think it's 7:10.
Oh, no, you're right, 7:00. Well, this is 7:30, but the agenda says, 7:10, look at that, there, on top of things. Okay, so, we are going to move to our 7:10 special permit hearing, special permit and site plan, by True Leaf LLC Medical Marijuana Dispensary, 216 North King Street, North Hampton Map ID 18-7. And-
Mr. Chair, Jesse Alderman, attorney for the applicant Life Essence, which does business as True Leaf. With me is John Furman, project engineer, and the architect of record, Dennis Greenwood, and True Leaf Cannabis Corp's Director of Business Development, Camilo Basta, is also here. And I did want to just clarify one thing, you said, I believe we're here just on the site plan approval application, and no special permit is required for this proposal?
Okay, sorry, I was giving inaccurate information. Just dropped a little bit, but-
You're good, yeah.
So, repeat that again?
So, it was advertised for something more than maybe, which is better than less than what they give. They only need a site plan for medical marijuana, right?
Okay, sorry about that.
Good evening, I'm John Furman, I'm the director of land development for the HD, and an engineer of record for the project. I also think, in addition to the site plan approval, we are asking for a waiver of a traffic study for that, and we can-
As part of your site plan?
As part of our site plan, so I don't know if it's a special request or not, but, so, Life Essence is looking to become a tenant in the existing building at 216 North King Street. I have on the screen here right now, the existing condition survey, and if you look at this line, that kind of goes around through here, and it comes up the front, on the side, all of this is the tenant space they're proposing, it's approximately 3,800 square feet. The building has another tenant in it right now, which is the Valley Motorsports, and then there's a portion of the front building, which is currently unoccupied as well. There are three curb cuts on the site, one on Hatfield Street, two on North King Street, and we are proposing a few improvements to the site. This is a site plan that was submitted with the set. Prior to this meeting, we attended the zoning board of appeals meeting, and we received three findings for the project. So, first is to allow for multiple curb cuts that are already existing on the site. There are three there, we're not proposing to change any, and we don't have the ability to change any. So, three curb cuts are there, we got that finding. The second one pertains to parking, and I'll zoom up and show you that one, on the side of the building, where our front entrance will be. There are these existing spaces on the side here. Your ordinance requires spacings, parking spaces to be eight and a half by 18, with a drive aisle of 18 feet. We have eight and a half by 18, but the drive aisle is only 13 at the moment, because it doesn't conform, we request a finding, it's existing, we're not looking to change that. What we are doing is pulling out the fence that separates two properties, and we're putting a single beam guardrail on either side of it, so we're gaining a foot on that drive aisle, but that's finding issued, so we're not changing the parking, so that's staying the way it is.
Before you go too much further, would you just give us a scope of what the business will entail?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just, so I-
No, of course, fair enough, thank you. The, the business is proposed to be a medical marijuana dispensary, and only a medical marijuana dispensary, so it will be available only for access, secured access, only to those who have patient registrations with the department's medical marijuana program. So, think maybe net up before the adult use, and before recreational customers, as some call them, are allowed in. So, that is the scope of this. Tested licensed cannabis products will be available for purchase only, again, with those with a patient registration card.
And we can make that a condition?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Does that really impact the traffic, right?
Well, it's a condition of your site, of your site-
Well, so, you can't, so, the zoning needs to be addressed now that we have adult use, and now that the CCC has merged with DPH, or DPH got absorbed by CCC approval process, Cannabis Control Commission approval process. Originally, the first uses allowed for marijuana were medical use only, and so, the zoning was drafted to address traffic impacts of medical use through triggering site plan review. When adult use became, was approved, the zoning was amended just for adult use, and knowing that there's still, they were still permanent separately at the state level. So, that's why we have two different standards for, and so, now that, at the state level, those have been merged together into one licensing process, there's host agreements for, no matter what process you're going through, we need, the city needs to go back and, and merge those two, so that we're not distinguishing between one or the other. And the difference was really to try to address traffic. So, actually, the site plan is what's addressing traffic, we have, we don't trigger site, we don't require site plan review by adult use. So, it's allowed by right, because we're addressing it through host agreement, the traffic issues through that mechanism. So, I would say you can't condition that it's medical use, because the others are allowed by right.
But we can condition this site plan approval. I'm not sure that would, I'm not, that may be a distinction without a difference, because we would, we would be allowed to convert the values by right, but we would also need those community, really, from the mayor's office, so.
Right, I mean, I, right, I'm not sure that it really makes that much of a difference. I just wanted to clarify that it would be allowed by right, so you wouldn't see it again, because any use that you, any conversion of a use that's allowed by right would never come back to the planning board.
But the, but the city's involvement would certainly not, this, I understand, this body's involvement may stop through the site plan approval process or the special permit process, but the city's involvement were that day to come, which it may or may not-
It's very, it's different in the legal interest, but it's outside of what the planning board-
It's not a condition that we should consider.
I don't know. Maybe assume that everybody agreed that it is.
Okay, sorry.
All right, back to engineering. All right. So, I just talked about the, the second finding we had, which was parking aisle, drive aisle. The third one is actually related to landscaping. So, your zoning ordinance requires, I believe it's a 20-foot buffer of landscaping along the frontage, if I'm not mistaken. We currently have seven. Math dot T has a project going at the intersection of Hatfield Street and North King Street, where they're putting in a roundabout. The curb lines that you see here, these shaded back ones are the existing, the proposed, the darker ones are the proposed, so we superimpose that design on this plan, and we're going to be ending up with a buffer of four feet. So, that is something that's beyond our control, we can't fix it. To offset that landscape requirement, and I can get to that in a later plan, and talk about it more in depth, is they're actually proposing to add landscape to this property, where there really doesn't exist right now, and I can go through that and show that to you as we, as we move on. Additionally, right now, there's a cross curb cut between these two properties, and we are proposing to close that. And our issue is with that, is that it would help, I think, improve safety for people coming in. When you come into these parking spaces, you have to back out, and that eliminates any conflict that might happen with those, with that curb cut. And that'll also be additional landscaping that we're adding. As we go through the, the plan set, these are just some of our standard details. One thing I do want to note here, was incorrect on our drawing, is that there is a significant tree in the back of the property here, and our site designer got a little aggressive with the drawing. That, that tree, we have a dumpster that's being added to the back of the property, but that dumpster is a roll dumpster, very small, they have an enclosure on it, when you get picked up, it'll have to be rolled out through the gate, rolled into the front, and picked up over here. He showed a new paving line, which would kind of assume that that tree was coming out. That's a significant tree, and that is not being touched, that is remaining. That is noted on our landscaping plan as well, that tree is staying. It's really the only tree on the property, so we're not going to cut it down.
I'm sorry. How are you?
How are we doing?
Getting the dumpster?
Well, this dumpster is drawn way oversized. So, don't think that that dumpster is going through that open. So, I said, my graphic got a little aggressive with the, with the design, so, I'm sure you're familiar with the roll-off dumpsters, they're, you know, they're digging up for a person to move, so. So, let me zoom this down a little bit here.
And are they going to be able to move it when this moves?
It'll have to be, yeah, there will be a pad that's put there, so it'll be sitting on a pad with an enclosure, and they'll, they'll be able to, it won't be rolling on grass or anything.
But will the pad affect the tree?
Um, I, we're pretty far away, and the pad's not going to be big, again, that's drawn way oversized. The pad will be something like three by four, it's not that much. These are our dumpsters, again, don't pay attention to that one. This is the landscaping plan, which I had mentioned, and the circles in here, or the ellipses, technically, are the issues of the findings that we, meaning, we just came from. The red ones are the curb cuts, the green ones are the landscaping, and the blue one here is the, is the parking. So, what we are looking at doing is landscaping around the front, and we're adding trees within that buffer through here. Those trees are horn memes, not sure what that is, sounds nice. The, and then, the ca's on the side here are basically pepper bushes, and they're three to four feet tall, so that'll provide some landscaping.
Where are those bushes at?
Those are right on the side here.
Okay.
In the plant, that's the guy.
Do you know if the trees, other than sounding nice, do you know if those were, are those a shade tree that's on the list with the city?
I believe they are, I'll double-check where you're-
Yeah, I don't know if it's-
Yeah.
If they chose out from the list, or if they just came up with a tree?
The designer, Greylock Design Associates, has done numerous, numerous projects in the city, so they're familiar with the list. So, pull them up. One thing to note, because this is a minor project, we do not have a stormwater permit to obtain for this. However, going back to the site plan, there are four catch basins on the site, and we're having a, we got a note on the plan that they're basically to be vacuum cleaned, so they, I'm not sure when the last time was, we'll clean out the slump area, so we can get some benefit out of that.
Any questions?
Yeah, is there an open space calculation about what's existing and what will be after the plan?
I don't know that we did that, because we're adding so much, we're adding more than, than what's there.
It's, right now, it's all concrete.
That's what I mean, so, because-
Yeah, and we did that, right, but it-
Don't they need to do something to meet the open space requirement?
We don't have an, we, the only open space required in the HB district is for those buffers and those tree areas, so we don't have a percentage, so they're adding to get closer to compliance for those requirements, but that's the requirement for open space in the HB district.
The last plan that I will be speaking about, then I will ask our architect to come up and walk through the plans, is basically the lighting plan we've put together. In this area here, which is really the area of where our main entrance is, there'll be some light fixtures added onto the side of the building. There are light fixtures on the building itself, so we took a light meter, and we walked around the building, so these numbers, I don't know if I can zoom up enough to see them, these are the foot candles of the existing building at night, and you can see the, you know, 1.8 cubic feet, 0.7, 0.8, this one, they happen to fall right underneath the lights, I think that's 3.3, so they're fairly high. To kind of help orient you where these are, is that we have these symbols here, and they're key to these pictures. So, this picture, at night, it's kind of tough with the cameras nowadays, it automatically wants to give you light, you can't take a dark picture anymore, so you take these for representative- So you take these for representative, but you can see the front of the building is, has existing signs on it, and there's a street light right in front, that's taken here, looking at the front of the building. This next one here is taken in the corner of the parking lot, looking down this aisle. There are lights on the building, which you can see. The majority of this light is still over from the car dealership adjacent to us. On this side, we stood here, took a picture onto the adjacent property. And you can see there's a, there's an existing pole here that has a light on it aimed right at the property. So it's shooting across our driveway, and you can see the shadow into there. And the last one, whoops, is basically standing here, looking down this aisle. This is when I figured out that my flash decided to turn on, so it's really not that bright that's there. But you can see the existing light that's at the back of the, of that drive out.
How are the lights scheduled? Are there, is it photocell on, timer off, or do you know?
I don't know.
So, so what are scheduled right now? We have wall packs that are dark sky compliant, that are going to be on for a few months.
Okay. And you know, typically, what we've done in the past is we have exterior lighting to go off an hour after closing business, something like that.
Can you go back to the, I know we were talking about lighting, but.
Yes.
For each question. So the, I would like that one. So the main entrance is on the right where those circles are? Can you show me where the main entrance is?
There's two, it's either this one or this one.
No, 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 that actual building.
Oh, for the building, our, yes, right over here.
So is that parking along that side? Is that going to be reserved for, like, employees or is that going to be test for?
That's patient park.
I mean, it just seems odd to me because you, because you, they have, people have to back out?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's not enough of an aisle to turn around. So there's an existing use in this building was a healthcare business of some kind. It didn't see patients, but it had counselor training and others. And we think that there's probably, and there was a lot of people coming and going, I think it was called ServiceNet, right, John? So this is, this is the existing condition, it's been there for a while. So there's those patient parking on the side aisle, as well as six spaces in the front of the building that are reserved under our lease for us. So it's, it's a tight lot for sure, but it's not a perfect scenario. But we've tested it out and believe it will work just fine. I mean, I've helped an assisted permit dispensaries for this exact same use in the greater Boston area where we deal with a lot of tight lots that have less favorable configurations even than this. And it should, it should work just fine, it's not going to be perfect, but.
Do people drive around the back?
They can't because of the tree.
Yeah.
They have, I'm less concerned about the tightness of the, the fact that even it's the only way to get out is to back out.
And that, that configuration has been there since this building has been in existence. And there's been, I think, two uses in there that we know of that did just that. Counselors would pull in, go and get their assignments, get training, whatever they had to do, and then they would back out. I personally talked to the, the business that was there from ServiceNet and asked them about that, and they, they never had an issue there.
So the projected patient population is, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a concern. If you had, if you had a co-located adult use in medical there, we would obviously have to have this, you know, substantial discussions with the city about how that, that would work. But the intensity of this usage is truly, we believe, and we've looked into this very deeply, it's not going to be an issue.
So is there some sort of side, I mean, presumably, these are medical, are patients with problems. Is there a safe way for them to walk in and deal with the cars at the same time?
They will, yeah, they, let me go back to the.
Like a sidewalk or a striping, something there's?
Yeah, something, so a person who is, as our brightest, they're going to get treated with medical marijuana, doesn't get hit by a car.
Right. There is a planter area, and there's three spots here, the door is right in front of this.
I, I mean, I've actually, I've actually worked in that building. And, I mean, it wasn't a problem for when people were sort of driving and leaving. But I, I do wonder if there's sharing, sharing a pathway, sharing a pathway.
Yeah.
It seems tough. And I, and I, and I trust, and I get that in Boston, they allow these things. But in Northampton, we have more space.
Now, just, just note that it, oh, I'm sorry.
And so I just, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, if there's no way that you can put a door up, if those.
So the ADA spot is there right next to the door. So if anybody has a mobility restriction, they're going to be literally at the front door. I believe we could make some sort of a mobility restricted designation for those three parallel spots there, which wouldn't present a conflict with the cars up on the opposite side of the door. Likewise, I would just, I would just note for, for the members of the board that we did have, you know, that a pretty robust discussion about this at the ZBA, and we did receive the finding. So I, you know, I, again, I think, I think for the, for the limited patient population that we're projecting to serve, we really don't, don't foresee trouble. But I, I would certainly be amenable to wayfinding signs and even a reservation of spots for additional mobility restricted patients to those three parallel spots.
If those three parallel spots were replaced with a sidewalk, what would that do to?
We wouldn't have the parking zoning.
We wouldn't, what, I'm sorry?
We would not have the number of spaces under our lease that the zoning requires for the use.
And with your lease with the spots in the front?
I don't think we have a parking minimum.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could weigh that.
You could also weigh it.
Yeah.
With your lease, as far as the parking spots in the front, how, can we get all of those, half of those?
We get six, right, Camilla, in front?
Twenty-two or twenty-four total, and I think it's six in the front.
Six in the front.
I was there this afternoon, and there were no cars at all parked in the front. Because I mean, it's. It's active, right?
Because it's like a motor cross, like.
Yeah, valley motorsports.
Right.
But it, it does run contrary to what we typically, we don't want to promote pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic in the same lane.
Backing up in reverse.
Right.
And now these, the spaces up top, how many spaces are beyond the door in that handicap spot?
Three. I mean, if we got a waiver from the parking for those three parallel spots, and, you know, I can, you know, I can, I can represent to you right now that we'd be happy to explore trying to lease three additional spots from the landlord. It is, it is a site with ample parking, but right now, we, that's not the business agreement, and I can't overpromise there. But if we were to get a waiver of the parking minimum, we'd be happy to do side aisle where the three parallel spots are.
Yeah, I think that's just, I mean, for what, for your, you're proposing a business that involves, you know, people who are getting treated for medical purposes. And though I, I don't think we should impose hospital restrictions on these types of buildings, I think having sort of safe walking places for people is responsible.
I think we very much favor the, the intent, and I don't, I, I, we would, that would work better for meeting patient needs. I just, we were hamstrung by the parking minimum.
Yep.
So we need a waiver. So I don't think you'd need a waiver because there is no, you know, parking requirements.
We thought there was one for two in this group, maybe we read it wrong, but.
So there, there's probably a conflict, there's, so there's the table of use that dictates, that sort of overrides what's in the, and the table for highway business, central business, all the districts that have standards for, and most of, many of the commercial districts have zero unless it's a specific use. So there, and we don't spell out medical marijuana in particular in section eight of the zoning. So, and on top of that, even as sort of belt suspenders, the board has the ability to waive or reduce parking by 20%. So, yeah, I think you're fine.
Well, we share the sense of the board that that would be a great solution, and it would help us meet our patients' needs. We just maybe misread our, maybe we sharpened our pencils and figure it out.
Question regarding the program, how many staff are, would typically be at the building? Could they use those parking spots to the plan north of the entrance?
Camilla, how many employees will be on site at one time, four, four or so?
Thirty-eight hundred square feet, yeah, four to six.
Four to six, including security personnel. Yes, they can use the ones to the front, absolutely.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, no, not the front, I'm saying to the, to the plan north.
Oh, we should, we should guarantee, we should, it, we should require employees to use furthest back. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think it makes a lot of sense.
I'd rather have employees backing up.
Yeah, because they're not coming and going. I think that makes tremendous sense.
In theory, it's going to be to five, six, seven hours.
Right, right, so you'd have one handicap, and then employee parking, sidewalk, and then, and then patients.
I think that makes tremendous sense.
So did you just get rid of these three, the parallel parts, that's okay?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and put some sort of hash.
Side.
So, I don't think we should pose putting an actual sidewalk in, I would.
Just because of the backing up.
Yeah, okay, all right, agree.
Okay, sorry, John, I got sidetracked, keep going.
That's all right, I'm pretty much done with the site. Turn it over to the architect.
Before you leave the site, speaking of sidewalks, is there, is there currently a sidewalk along King Street there?
No.
No.
They're going to put one in. They're going to put one in.
Right, it's part of the Hatfield.
They being Math dot T.
Not they being.
Okay, there you go.
Do we need to know about the architectural features of either the inside or the outside?
Building's not changing on the outside. The inside, no. That's all dictated by the CCC.
We don't need to.
So this can be.
All right. Who does, you have a question?
Any other questions or comments from the board? Just a broad-reaching question, Carol. So this is a tenant, so they've got a lease agreement with the owner of the building. But in some parts, we talked about the parking, well, that's the way it's always been, our hands are tied, it's not our building, we're just a tenant. If this was the owner of the building and they were, and they were proposing these modifications or change, would we act any differently than we do now? I just want to set a precedent where.
Yeah, no, I, I think it is a different situation because the applicant doesn't have control of the site or the entire building. Yet they still need to come through this process because of the use, the way the zoning is set up now. Having said that, that's why they went to the zoning board, to seek relief from meeting a lot of those standards that you would, might normally see. I guess I should also step back and say that there's no footprint change. So you wouldn't see, if this was just a reuse of that space for use that didn't in and of itself trigger site plan, you wouldn't see any changes anyway. So, except along the street front, except that buffer that are required to, to address that or the zoning for relief. So in most circumstances, you wouldn't necessarily be looking at this anyway. But it's just the nature of this particularly.
Sure.
So this intersection has been flagged for a long time, it's kind of a dangerous place, that's why the roundabout is coming in. There's a hope that more people will be able to walk up to River Valley Market and beyond. So I wonder if it's appropriate on that sidewalk there to request that maybe our bench be put there, as we've done in other parts of King Street, if that would be kind of a resting place for pedestrians, or does that break out?
It's a much narrower buffer than we have in the other part. So the reason, the buffer standard is you have 10-foot of tree belt, then a six-foot sidewalk, then a 12-foot tree belt. So that gives a lot more space for that kind of thing. And, and they went to the zoning board for relief from providing, that was all of that. So I'm not sure as the, who would be the best location for that. Because the depth or the dimension is so small.
And also, the way the roundabout's coming in, it's hard to visualize if it would be appropriate anyway yet? I mean, I know, I mean, I don't know.
In this part, it would be after, I mean, this is the approach to the roundabout, so you're sort of out of that. But I think it's more about the dimensions of the site.
Is any place along King Street appropriate for people to walk in and sit down?
Yeah.
And put that River Valley, so put that kind of sidewalk to nowhere in the hope that projects somewhere down the line would start to connect the dots, right, exactly. Quick question, so there's one side building, the top left.
Yes.
I thought there was another side building, your garage, is anything being removed or not?
Nothing's being removed, everything's the same. This, this building is, is here.
And that's the only side building, your accessory kind of building?
This is the existing condition survey, that building and then this building right here.
Yeah, I thought there was another.
There's another building on the backside of this, which is on the car dealership, but it's on a different property, it's like right here.
Okay.
Maybe that's what you're, and there's a bunch of like boxes there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions by the board before we open it up to the public, are you, you guys all set?
All set.
Okay. All right, John, we're good for the time being. Any questions by the public? No, okay. All right, we'll leave this open for a little bit, we'll discuss any other discussion or questions by the board. I don't have an issue with this, and I think that the items that we brought forward are good ones. I think the lighting plan, so far I've got the lighting plan, the sidewalk on the side. We talked more tangentially about the payment in lieu of the traffic study, which the applicant has already addressed. Parking, employee parking, employee parking in the back. And how do we want to, with signage, or are we, or is that just a promise from the applicant, or?
I think signage would be helpful, so in case there are six spaces and there's only four employees parked there at that time, and the public doesn't come in and park there. And we have that wrapped in and out, so if there was signage installed on the building, it's an employee parking. Which is going to cause a consternation for folks because why are these darn employees get parked so close when they're a lot of.
Well, it seems like the signage is just going to have to be. Well, before that, once you get down there, there's a parking lot.
You might also consider not necessarily doing six, because there, there, there's a range of number of employees, and that way it would leave some of those spaces open, maybe just the furthest four as opposed to six as, as designated.
I think, I think four would be appropriate number. I think there would be few and far between times when the full, when there would be six employees on site. We do want to make sure that at times of peak demand that there are available spaces for patients, so the last four are responsible.
Can you say again how many spots there are after the handicap spot?
There's seven.
Seven.
Yeah, that, that whole site has eight.
Anything else, any comments in general?
Yeah, so what was the rationale for not having a traffic impact study?
So the zoning allows for, if they're, if the applicant is making a, voluntarily making a payment in lieu of traffic mitigation, instead of spending additional money on traffic analysis, they're offering to mitigate what we are assuming their trips are. Then that's allow the other thing, the other piece of it is, there's been a lot of traffic study work done on King Street as a part of this, as part of the, you know, the roundabout. And so we told all applicants, if they're, if they address what the assumptions are for their traffic impact, then they don't need to provide a study.
Because of the current data, is that, that's your.
Right, we have assumptions about what their impacts will be. They're offered to address their impacts in the way that we assign these.
It's often interesting because some money goes into traffic mitigation, but it's not, that money isn't spent on getting traffic in that neighborhood building.
Well, that's, there is, we do allocate resources to pedestrian and other safety improvements in the network that's in this. that's in this vicinity of where that project, where that impact is. So we do do that. But it's not necessarily gonna be right at that intersection, I mean, we're, we, you know, there's a lot of money being put into the roundabout to make that safer, but there are other streets that are feeding into that, where people will be coming from other places, it's not just, they don't just appear there under a pink street. So there are many places where we can look to address issues.
Anything else? All right, so public comment is still open, I'll imagine it closed.
Second.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Um, so I've got, I think, four things. Uh, the lighting, off one hour after close of business, sidewalk on the side, um, payment in lieu of traffic study, and employee parking, the last four, um, parking spots with adequate signage there too.
I'm gonna just add another one, you were correct about the horn beam, it's not officially on our list, so, um, you might, um, they'll need to change the plans to show the parking, so that, um, modify the street tree planting to include trees that are on our approval.
Tree sounded too good, that's what I thought.
Yeah. Can we get a new landscape?
Could I make one additional request?
No, sorry. We're closed public comment, so now this discussion's just a must at this point. Though I can, no, I can't. Sorry.
Could you go through our conditions one more time?
Uh, lighting plan, lights off one hour after close of business, sidewalk on the side, tra- uh, payment in lieu of traffic study, employee parking, the last four spots with adequate signage, and the trees need to be on the city's shade tree west end.
And I just wanna confirm, so when, our sidewalk standards are cement concrete, five feet unless, um, it's, you know, this is not on the street, so normally we would do, um, six feet in a commercial district, but since this is...
Yeah, this is a pedestrian.
Right.
Right.
So do we need, do we need, we don't need to do a waiver or anything?
No, 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 no.
So I didn't ask.
Um, did it be, um, let's see?
And it's a site plan, normally not, a special permit.
Yeah, for MAP ID eighteen dash seven, site plan for Trulyville LLC, be approved with the five conditions, just recital.
Second.
Second, any discussion? No, all in favor? Opposed? There you go, thank you, you're approved.
And I want it, it's a big industry, here in North Canton.
Okay, we're gonna keep moving, we're a little behind. Uh, so we're gonna keep things going and open up the next hearing scheduled for seven thirty PM by Thomas Guu, site plan for five new residential units, twenty-five Maple Avenue, Canton, MAP ID thirty-two C dash seventy-one and seventy-two. And we have a presentation.
My name's Terry Reynolds, New Orleans Engineering, I'm here for Tom Guu. Okay. In general. Um, and, uh, what's being proposed is, um, basically a five-unit townhouse development at the end of Maple Avenue, uh, downtown. And, uh, basically, what's currently there is, it's an open, open site with a, with a parking lot. It is zoned, um, special conservancy on about two-thirds of the site, and then it's, um, residential on, on the front, front corner in this area. Uh, so, this is a site plan approval, um, and so what's being proposed are five units of three-story townhouses, uh, with ten space parking area, um, plantings, um, and, uh, some restoration, uh, to improve the conditions that are out there right now. The, the site is actually created pretty much completely, this whole peninsula is created out of fill. Um, the, the actual, the Mill River actually used to run straight across, and it used to be a dyke back in nineteen fourteen or so. Um, and over the years, this was filled in, and then it was also capped and clipped. That's the reason, needs restoration out there. So there are two, two trees being removed, there's a large sycamore right here, and then there's also a, I believe that's a walnut, um, behind the building here that will need to be removed. Those are being replaced based on the, the tree ordinance, um, with trees around the perimeter, and then, um, within this restoration area, there's a, a lot of smaller, um, gown, gown plantings.
I'm sorry, the, the second tree behind the proposed buildings?
Yeah.
Says on the plan, tree to remove, to remain?
Uh, that, it's been revised, I'm sorry, you're looking at a...
It's a big revision. Why?
It's too close, it can't, it's too close to the building. The, the, the root system would get impacted too heavily.
Your, um, arborist report says that it could be retained.
Uh, I believe that's this one over here, over on this side.
I could be wrong, I thought you referred to the one...
Yeah, no.
Close to the other property for the...
Yeah, there, there's another one right here that, that is to remain. There's a sycamore and then another large maple over in here.
One inch question is on that butter's line there, behind, in the backyard of the...
Yeah, this one, this one is proposed to be removed here, and then there's a large sycamore here, that's to be removed.
So on the plan, it's shown it's a twenty-four inch ash.
Yeah, you've, you've got, you have a, an old mill, it's been revised since then.
I know.
Yeah, originally, originally hoped to keep that, um, but, uh, yeah. It was, it was mislabeled and, uh, originally hoped to keep it.
So you might wanna go over the site changes that have been made since the plan chiefs were submitted. The latest one, I think, is should be, uh, well, there's a revision date up there on the upper right inch.
Uh, bottom left.
Nine twenty-five.
Bottom right, sorry.
Nine twelve.
Nine twelve, so we've got the nine twelve, so...
Yeah, you know, we're, you, you should be looking at something that is dated, actually the latest I, um, I submitted an electronic.
Right, so we have, those are electronic ones, um, so you might just, um, go over the changes quickly.
Yeah, so, so the bottom line is, that tree is proposed to be removed, um, and it's being replaced at the, um, one-half, one-half per inch ratio. Um, and that's, that's spelled out over on, on this side. Uh, and that, no, actually, that's up in here, it was out there. Um, so, we've got ten, ten spaces is required, there's actually a turnaround area for emergency, for an ambulance. Um, and here, along with, uh, allows for, uh, truck trucks be able to turn around. Uh, Maple Avenue is a very narrow street, it's only sixteen feet wide. Um, uh, so it doesn't offer any opportunity to, for anybody to turn around anywhere else. Um, so, along with that, um, there is a, currently twenty-five parks in the parking lot here, but they also have parking along the edge here, which is not an approved curb cut. So, the parking for twenty-five is being consolidated in this area for four parking spaces. Um, head in, um, two, two, two lined up next to each other. Um, and this, this space here will be alone conceded and removed. Uh, additionally, um, the city's requiring that the sidewalk be replaced across the front of the site. So this will be all new granite curb and concrete sidewalk, um, with the standard...
I'm sorry, Terry, to interrupt you, could you go over the parking change behind twenty-five?
Uh, so currently, there, there is gravel parking on the south side, so, west side of the building right here. Um, it doesn't really get used, they have a sidewalk, really, the people living in this house really park in the parking lot currently. Um, it, it, the, it is depressed, you know, it's hard to say whether it was intentional or not, or whether it just got pounded down on the year. But that's gonna go away, and so that'll be brought to the other side of the building. So this building will have all its parking on the northeast side of the building.
Well, your, the plan shows a long skinny space, says two spaces.
Yeah, that's been revised to four spaces, that was part of the comments that came from Carolyn, that you can't keep that.
So, now it's one, I can't see...
So it's four spaces right in there.
So y'all have a total of fourteen spaces then?
Yes. Yep. Because of the curb cut requirement, it only allowed one curb cut. And what we were proposing originally, with the original submit, would have been two curb cuts, one here and one there.
So the ten spaces look to the west of the new building?
Yeah, so there, there are ten in the new parking lot area.
Right, and four in the backyard of the...
And four in this, yes.
So, while we're on that parking area, I'd probably jump in the gun on you, but I'm gonna see if we can't look at that sycamore tree, that forty-inch grape specimen, and see if we can't move those units down towards that parking space and reallocate the parking spaces to the large lot.
It, it won't fit in there with the setbacks, it's, it's squeezed in where as, as tightly as it can.
The setback to house number twenty-five?
The building setback, because it angles in. So, so this, this building, this building configuration can't slide, it can't slide to the southwest anymore than it already is currently. The, that, that sycamore unfortunately has quite a large canopy. The only way to save that would be cut this development down by two units, and that, that's not acceptable.
It's, by your arborist, let you know that because of the, the large canopy. And I'm sorry to get into trees so much, I know you've got a lot more to go into, so we can come back to that later.
Can I just, can you expand the, go through the twenty, expand the, yeah, again?
Is that helpful?
Yeah, just a little bit. I don't need all the little writing, just helpful though.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
So, what's being proposed is a, is a new sidewalk across the front of the building, extending across, uh, the new building. Uh, basically granite curb bending at the, at the property and then transitioning to, uh, just granite, uh, concrete curb rather. And, uh, so, basically you have, uh, shared stoops, um, on each, each unit, on, well, two out of four of them. Um, and, uh, adding some minimal lighting here, the safety lighting on the site. Dump stair area right here that is gonna be screened just with a sacket fence around it. So that's...
I'm sorry, I mean, now that I can see, where's the turnaround?
The turnaround is right here, this area, from here, they can turn right in here.
So it'll be a, no parking sign there?
Uh, well, I hadn't put one, but we could, not a problem, it's not just right, it's parking.
Well, I, I guess I'd like this, I mean, if it, if safe, if this, if there's a safety component there, uh, the... I, I feel like there should be, some of the signage it says will allow, allow, uh, safety vehicles to turn around.
Sure.
Just hashed out.
That's reasonable, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Yep. Uh, so I'm gonna go on to, uh, next page. So, this page is basically the, the grading and drainage, so what's being proposed is that there's a subsurface system that's gonna pick up the parking lot and the building. Uh, it's both combination infiltration detention system, uh, with an overflow coming down into the old riverbed. Part of, uh, the requirement is actually to protect the trees alone here. Uh, basically, this limited work is, is also tree protection, uh, so that people are not going over in these tree areas while we're proceeding. And the arborist, in the arborist's recommendation, actually, this, in this area here, uh, will, will also be fenced off for, for, to protect this chestnut tree here, um, that will be added. So, back to the stormwater, uh, this, the roof is being collected, the, the parking lot's being collected, and it's all being treated through a treatment system in the parking lot, and then into the subsurface system in this area. Uh, this, with the test pits that were out there, was determined that this was the only area that really had native material, um, that, that was suitable for infiltration purposes. Other than that, um, we've got a new sewer extension coming off of the end of the existing sewer, coming down across the front of the site, water service coming across the site. Um, and part of the comments that came in this afternoon was shut, individual shut-offs for each of the units. Um, and there's some additional specifications for, for the sewer and water lines. So, uh, that's, uh, that's pretty much it, I'll just leave it, do you guys have...
How about snow removal, Terry?
Snow removal is actually located in this corner, and it's called out on the, on the site plan, on the layout plan. Right, right here, yeah.
And the dumpster enclosure, what's the, the nature of the enclosure?
It's sacket, sacket fence.
Uh, can you talk about the exterior lighting?
The exterior lighting is just stoop lighting for the stoops, and then there are just two, um, twelve-foot, uh, hole, hole lights in the parking lot.
And those on a timer, or how are those, are those on twenty-four?
Those would be on a timer, motion, motion detector.
So motion on, timer off type of thing, or?
Yeah.
Have you thought about the possibility at all of, um, moving unit five alone to the north? Which would allow you to change...
It cannot, it cannot because of the special conservancy.
Because of what? It would cross over the line?
Yes.
How much is it gonna, like, I mean, I don't know if this can even be changed, but if, if it crosses over the line like a, a foot, is there some sort of mechanism to allow it? but if it crosses over the line like a foot, is there some sort of mechanism to allow it? I mean, if we're saving a tree, it's valuable for crossing over into-
Really spectacular tree.
I mean, isn't that, isn't that something that, you know, give a little-
Well, the thing about zoning, there is a restriction that no new residential development can be approved in the special conservancy district. And so that's, and, you know, there, so I think it's not clear anyway just one unit or moving it would address, would be outside the canopy anyway. It's not clear that would happen, but nevertheless, you can't.
Is it, I mean, I can see on the drawing, it looks very close to the porch area. Is it generally too close to the house? Could the porch be moved around to the other-
In terms of these trees that are being removed?
Well, we're talking about that yet?
Yeah, well, the sycamore is right in the edge of the building. I mean, it would need to be over here. You know, it is a beautiful tree, and we look at as many ways as possible to try and work around it. But because of the SC district, it really limits what you can do. I mean, you're really working in this small area.
Could you show the planting plans just to see the replacement trees where, where those are? Or are they, that's where they're now? So how many ones do you need?
There are three, these are all, should be all two-and-a-half inch trees. And then there are smaller plantings to fill in these areas out in this area.
Okay. Were there any other changes on these drawings versus what we have in front of us?
Well, the parking lot was widened by a couple feet. It was a little too tight, was that only eighteen feet? Widen it to twenty, which is tight, but it's acceptable for parallel parking. Additionally, from those plans, the subsurface system was adjusted slightly. So the subsurface system was a little closer to the property line, moved to ten feet away. Also moved it a little to the southeast to get a little more distance from this lemon tree here. Other than that, I don't think there's anything really significant, other than notes and sort of thing.
Were there any DPW comments that we haven't heard yet?
So, and just to clarify, this didn't require a stormwater permit, because it's less than an acre of disturbance. But DPW did review the stormwater permit. So, the, there were some, I think because of changes that happened in the plans, there's still some inconsistency with the plan sheet. So final revised plans should be submitted. Let's see. So the DPW asked for more clarification on the transition from the granite curb treatment of the sidewalk. And they made a comment about the proposed drive aisle for the parking lot, eighteen feet wide, and saying that the recommended minimum for ninety-degree parking is twenty-four feet. We don't have, vehicle conflicts may occur, is what their comment was on that. I think this is pretty low volume traffic, you know, to the site. We do require eighteen feet for backup between parking spaces. So that meets the zoning. I think their comment is just about their concern about the turning movement. There were some issues about water and sewer line callouts. And more technical details about inlets. And then confirmation about infiltration systems during construction. They want to have observation, they're to inspect groundwater conditions, but they do need to make sure the infiltration system works as designed.
You have to get a scene of all the things.
Yes. And then there are recommendations for conditions. Because there's gonna be a separate stormwater permit, that there be conditions about maintenance and inspections of the stormwater system once it's installed.
Those are included standard in the drainage report.
Yeah, you know, around the stormwater, I must admit that more and more we see these subterranean retention systems that aren't easily, they're not easily able to be checked. So we have to go by them to make it so that, you know. But I guess the DPW, or the industry in general, we haven't been doing these parts for, as far as I can remember, seven or eight years. The industry isn't really concerned about the proliferation of these subterranean, I don't know if there's any-
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty standard.
Yeah. No brackets.
They work reasonably well, as you say, if the treatment's-
Maintained.
If they're maintained, but it's, we know that maintenance doesn't happen on a regular basis once the developer is gone and it turns over to an association.
That's why, you know, the stormwater permit in the city is good, because it does force those reports every year.
But this doesn't have a stormwater permit.
This does not.
And I'm surprised the DP, so you have an outfall going over that steep bank towards the Mill River, which is an overflow outfall, but the DPW had no concerns about that either, huh?
Right, and it also requires a permit for the conservation commission, so they're gonna be looking at that because that's in the jurisdiction.
Yeah, so tell me more, so all of this building is within a one-hundred-foot buffer zone, right?
It's all within the two-hundred-foot riverfront.
Two-hundred-foot riverfront and a hundred-foot buffer?
There is no buffer, it's riverfront. Riverfront's a resource area by itself.
Okay, so it's all within the two-hundred-foot river, I see.
They're the same standards, the Wetlands Protection Act standards and the DPW standards.
And this hasn't gone to controversy commission yet for their-
They're in the middle of the hearing process, yeah.
It's all subject to that.
Right, but it's also, but the stormwater standards are the same, or DPW's review and conservation.
There are several comments, staff recommendations on it, Terry. Have you seen these, because they seem-
No, I mean, they were, they're just related to the plan changes, so, but you might-
I'll go through these, yeah. When we come back, we'll open it up to public comment, and then we can review these. I'll keep it open and-
Are these ones I haven't seen?
I think you've-
When did they go out?
No, these are just internal recommendations, but I-
Oh, okay.
I don't wanna, I'm not gonna close the hearing and then bring up a recommendation that you can't respond to, so we'll keep that open. I'll bring it back to you. Any questions by the board comments before we open up the public comment?
Could you quickly go over the-
Yeah, one thing you guys might like to see is actually the elevation. So this is the layout of the front with stoops here, with a slight bump out in the front, to give it a little more architectural appeal. Basically, each stoop is covered. Backs have sliders and pavios on each of them. It is a solar-ready roof. And architectural shingles with vinyl siding proposed for the outside. This is pretty consistent with what else is on the screen also.
And these are market rate units or?
Why architecturally, just out of curiosity, the lack of windows on the second floor bump out?
I believe, you know what, I'm not, I don't have a good answer for that. I believe that, oh, that's where the stairways are.
Right.
I'm not sure what's going on here.
Just looks awkward, unnecessarily awkward to me.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of purview on there, but, and it's all one color too.
Yeah.
Recently, we've seen a nice representation of a townhouse situation like this, where the units were broken up by different colors, which kind of made it pop a little bit better.
Well, I'm happy to see on the new plan, which I don't have two additional parking places, because I think they need them. I'm really bothered by approving a plan that involves removing that, those two trees. That sycamore tree is a huge spectacular tree that has enormous ecological and aesthetic benefits. I don't, I mean, I don't know if we can be talked out of it, but it's, that's, and then now that we find out twenty-four-inch ash is also gonna have to go, reducing the proposed plan to four units and making the two smaller units larger, if that would be a benefit to the applicant, would allow them to retain those two trees. Yeah, that's of concern to me.
So, just to clarify, this is site plan review. The ordinance allow, has a trigger for when trees are removed from a site that there is replacement requirement. So there's no requirement that trees need to be protected, because we have this process or ordinance requirement that there's replacement for those trees.
So there's no, I mean, it's pitifully inadequate, of course, to replace a tree, trees like these with two-inch caliper trees. I mean, in fifty years, maybe, come close, maybe hundred.
Seven, five, hundred.
Yeah, right.
Right, so, but-
Regardless, we don't have the purview.
You, I mean, certainly there are many ways to design a project. You could have a smaller footprint, taller units, and shrink the overall footprint. However, you, the board couldn't deny a project because there are trees being removed, because the city has determined that the way they would address private trees being removed on a project, or for a project, is through this replacement. You know, that was the discussion the city had. That's the way, that's the path the city council approved in terms of addressing the impacts of removing trees. The other piece to look at is the footprint of development against the entire site, which will not be disturbed on that, the remaining portion of the-
Could we, if we thought it appropriate, could we require larger caliper trees? Now, I understand there's an issue of their survivability. They may need more air and tending and watering, but could we, I mean, a two-inch caliper tree to replace what is gonna be taken down is just pathetic.
You could retire, again, require a larger tree to be replanted, but then you do run up against that risk.
Well, we could impose that risk on the applicant.
Right, so it would just mean that there's longer, you know, enforcement and maintenance and oversight of that tree. The other piece, just, so you know, I think we've been seeing more and more of this, and this is anecdotal, so I don't have statistics on it, but even if trees were to be saved this close to a project, using the canopy as a mechanism for tree protection area, it's not clear that that's a certain path for saving those trees. We've seen some projects five years out where trees that were protected actually are dying. So I don't know that we know enough about what really, or maybe it's a matter of construction oversight, or lack of oversight in those cases where the trees are dying. So again, I don't have specific, I think there hasn't been enough analysis to actually know on this site exactly what it would take to save those trees, how far you'd have to be.
Well, certainly would require reducing, eliminating one unit, which is a big hit for the applicant.
Or it could be a smaller footprint and redesigning the units, but-
Well, right, right.
You wouldn't necessarily have to eliminate the total number of units. There are many ways-
Substantially reduce it though, because it's gotta move.
Right.
A lot of effort.
You could also do a different design. Instead of a townhouse style, you could do five units in a building, and then you're reducing the footprint. But yes, that would take a sort of reevaluation. And again, this is site plan, so your jurisdiction isn't to say you're gonna not approve a project because a tree is coming down, because we have that other.
So Alan, I agree with you about the majesty of this sycamore tree, but I think even I struggle with it in having to balance the infill and having that mixture of homes closer to town, you know, it's terrible to kind of weigh those.
Yeah, well, at the end of time, I mean, we could talk about maybe in this situation, require bigger trees to be replaced and impose that obligation to keep them alive. I don't know, it's a thought.
I mean, I'm just, I'm sure you guys have thought of this, but if you just put the house on the other side and put the sidewalk on-
The S, the special conservancy district seems to-
Oh, does it go in?
Turn around. It's a left-hand turn there.
So I understand you said that lopping off units is not a possibility, but can you perhaps speak for why a smaller footprint, as Carolyn was suggesting, not townhouses, you know, configuring the units differently, why you decided not to go that route?
This is what the client would like. Been looking at this project for quite a long time. You know, it's given with what you have for a street coming in, the special conservancy, the parking requirements, this is kind of what was able to fit in here.
Terry, can you just review, you started to architecturally the building envelope, siding, shingles, windows, just the types, the trim, so forth, just what the elements are?
Well, it's, you know, vinyl siding, I assume it's gonna be standard wood trim and low-e glass. I don't have that detail for you.
We're proposing, I think we're, number twenty-five is that current two-family. There's a fence that comes along into that gravel area, and that's gonna be taken down.
Yeah, but to accommodate the required sidewalk that has to come down.
And the trees along there, they're gonna, they'll come into the calculation for removal. They're small enough.
Yeah, those are all under twelve inches.
Yeah, yeah.
I will say, though, that on that note, the tree warden went out to confirm he believes those are actually city public shade trees. So that would come under a different jurisdiction in terms of replacement. So, that would, even though there don't need a significant tree size requirement for replacement, if, because they're public shade trees, that triggers replacement.
How far are public shade trees determined? Is there a size or?
It's anything in the right of way.
So a stick is a public shade tree?
Anything in the public right of way.
So you got a little one-inch sucker that's growing, and it's gonna cost you ninety dollars to remove it.
That's a question for the, for-
Just wondering, yeah.
Any other questions, comments from the board before we open up the public?
So, do we have a planting plan yet?
Yeah.
There's one?
Yeah. It showed us the layout of the trees, or the seven or eight type of trees.
Yeah, and then there's a planting schedule over here on the left that talks about trees and shrubs that are also- about trees and shrubs that are also included in this, in this hatch area.
Yep. Terry, any other comments from you before we open up to the public?
No, I think that's, I think it's open for.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we're going to open this up to the public, if there's anyone that would like to comment on this here, please raise your hand, come on up to the, I'll call on you, come up to the podium, just give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Muriel Bruce, and I am the president of the board trustees at Randolph Place Condominiums. This particular development is going to be, to my understanding, on the other side of the stream that runs behind our property and is adjacent to our property. We have, we have two concerns, actually. The first one is environmental. We have testing on our property periodically by Columbia Gas for the coal tar ash, which I guess has been underground for 100 years. And as late or early as six months ago, I guess Columbia discovered because of some odor coming from the stream in the back, that their map of where that coal tar ash is, is not accurate. So they have been doing additional testing and trying to figure out where it is actually. And being that it is down in the stream area, we are concerned that development of this particular piece of property is now going to affect the residue that is sitting under the ground and has been not a problem for us at this point, but could become a problem in the future. So that's the first concern. The second concern that the residents of the building asked me to convey you is that the backyard, which backs up to that stream, is an area that is loaded with habitat for, mostly, they were concerned about the birds, the different species of birds that come to rest during different portions of the year. And I actually have a bag full of pictures that one of our residents has been taking over the past year of the numbers of different kinds of species that are in that area. And they are very concerned that this development will affect that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have one here?
Hello, my name's David Marks. I live at 19 Maple Avenue, and have since 2016. This, when I got word of this development, there were many concerns that I had, and I can't speak, you know, professionally about any of them, but I want to bring them to you guys. The first is indeed what, I forget what her name was, what she addressed about the contamination underground. I've been notified by my landlord, as well as the person who owns the house adjacent to us, you can see it on there, that there's a lot of contamination under the water there where the Mill River used to run, as, as soon as 20 feet deep, so not very deep. And stirring that up and also, I, I'm, I'm concerned that none of this has any, I mean, we didn't touch on it today, but any notes of the contamination underground there and stirring that all up. So that's the first. The second, we've, we have touched upon today, the, the 100-plus-year-old sycamore tree that is at the end of the street. I found it very baffling that it was just noted today, like, oh yeah, that changed, we're getting rid of that tree as well. That tree, that changed suddenly, that, that's not as glamorous and as much of a spectacle as the sycamore, but that tree, if, I don't know, raise your hand if you've seen that tree in person?
It's a butternut.
So, two, three. Okay. So five people have seen it in person. I, I recommend you, if you can't make it down there, to just look at it, because it is, it's quite the thing and it's, it's. It's hard to imagine that we would just say, oh, sorry, the, the plans. I understand the conservation committee and there's other people who are going to be looking at this and, and stuff like that, but it's, it's hard to write off this tree because there's not many trees that are 100-plus years old. The third is that this street is kind of a forgotten street. I've had to call the town many times to say, hey, are you guys, you guys plowing today? Some, some city employees have even asked me if it was a private street or a public street. It is indeed a public street, to my understanding, and I don't know if anybody knows this, but up until the 70s or 80s, it was a private street. The people owned both sides, they owned all three of the houses, 19, 21, 25, and they owned the garages across as well. That has since changed, but the street has not changed. So especially as we get into developing the, the Hempis, which plans to occupy not one of the four spots, but four of the four spots there in the end of the street, and building develops, developments like this, the street absolutely needs new sidewalks or even to start to be swept. We, the street does not get, doesn't fit the town's ratio of cars that per travel to get swept by street sweepers. So that has been a concern that my landlord has said, like, yeah, we just don't really get attention from the town there. But it's a little gem of a street and it's, there's a lot to it. I think a lot that we're overlooking here, just by talking about the plan simply. I think that, yeah, we should look at those factors and, and have a lot more discussion about not only, I, I'm very excited for this development, but not only the, this development, but the street as a whole.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, first time.
My name is Seth Fisher. I live in the Purple House, that's right over there on the corner, on the, kind of the closest street, closest house on Con Street to basically where this, in my estimation, kind of unique street comes out, where it's, maybe it's a more of a unique dead-end street than I've seen because it's virtually all rentals. And so therefore with rentals, you oftentimes have more people than you might have if it was, you know, two people living there in, in a house. And so it comes up the street and it kind of dumps out. Now, if it was just a dead-end street, that's one thing, but it's at the set of lights. And that's really, the, the, the traffic issues are my biggest concern related to this. I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't support any development, maybe one house or something, because I think that we already have a significant amount of problems here. I lived in that house for 20, almost 25 years. I was parking on the side of the house and the traffic is so bad, I was backing out, we'd been backing out of our driveway for 15 years, we turned our backyard into a driveway, extended it around, so we could actually turn around and it's still a pain to get up sometimes. So there are significant problems on a daily basis with just the traffic on that street. We have Neta down the street, as soon as Neta opened up, that entire street was just a parking lot. It still has more traffic than it seems to ever have had before. Now we have, as someone else pointed out, we have the Hempis opening up there, which is going to increase traffic. People are going to be taking right turns off of Cons onto Maple, whether they should or not, you know, people are going to actually be taking left turns onto Maple, whether they should or not. So the amount of traffic that goes on there is, it will exacerbate a significantly, from my perspective, challenged street where they have to, to back up the, the trash truck, I hear it's at 6:30 in the morning, whatever time they're backing up down the street, just to get all the way down there. So now they're talking about adding 10, 10 spots. That's great for the people that are now potentially moving in, but what about if they have visitors? We have, they made a point of saying that, that basically they have, now have, they have four spots where they used to have two. Well, that's great, but the thing is, is there's still people living at 25. You can't really, from my perspective, you can't look at this as one big project. You've got, what's going on with 25 maybe? Because they got their spots and you look at what's going to happen with this other spot. The other comment was that some people that are across the street, I think, parking a lot. Well, there's no guarantee that that's going to always be the case. People will want to park wherever they can, as close as they can. And I personally believe that this is going to provide, this is going to cause some significant problems, I'm not even talking about when we have the hot chocolate run and, and all the other kind of activities that we have in the city. So from my perspective, since I'm pulling out and seeing this potential nightmare on a daily basis, that to me is, is a pretty simple perspective on my vote. I don't get one, but still, I get to present my perspective to you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll take the next one in the back. And I should note for everybody, just to note, this, with the site plan review, we're limited to a certain extent as to what is within our purview to comment on. And if, and if an applicant meets the requirements, the setbacks, the zoning, so forth, we, we have very limited say as to what they can or cannot do. If certain, if certain functions or aspects of the project are allowed by right, they're allowed by right, and we can't change that, no matter how we feel, or no matter how a buddy neighbors feel, so just FYI. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Margaret Tenasco, and I live at 36 Willson Avenue, which is directly behind the proposed building. And I've lived there since 1981, and of course, I've called that little place an oasis because it was a beautiful place. And there is lots of, lots of small animal, wildlife, and lots of frogs in the, in the riverbed. I would be happy, so I live right behind that, and the proposed building will be 112 solid feet, three stories high, 20 feet from my property, from where my house is, which will be a wall. And it requires the taking down of the butternut and the sycamore, which is hard for me if I live there. And, you know, maybe not relevant to this, I mean, I understand people have a right to develop their property. I would be happy if it was a smaller scale, if it could. Two guys, two guys from Columbia Gas called us and made a plan to talk to us today because they had been, they, they inspected because of the problems that we talked about with this area. And they said that just in one of their casual walkthroughs a few weeks ago, what they found was the odor of the tar in a place that they hadn't expected to find it. And they have to do more testing now. And they wanted to make sure that we understood that this was all going on and that the, the property right behind us has not been tested. And they would like to get in there and test it and feel that it's important to do that before we go ahead with a plan that will, you know, nobody knows what will happen as a result of the, of the digging or the water flow or anything. So that's, you know, of course they have their property, yeah, oh, the special conservancy is the other thing. I, I learned that it's, the special conservancy came about when David Musanti was thinking about having a walkway through the Mill River, and it was the whole site plan is a little clutter. But that never materialized. And then people have said that it wasn't, because nothing has ever been there, the special conservancy doesn't apply. Now, I don't, I don't know anything about that, but I don't know if it can be challenged in that way. But if it could be challenged for the sake of relocating some of the units closer to the, to the, to that area, I know that the neighbor who, at the end of Maple Avenue on the other side of the street, not 25, she thinks that would also be a good plan. She's willing to do that, it's her garage that we're touching up against. So, so I guess the major thing is, is there any room for how neighbors do feel about changes in the neighborhood? If it, in, in just in the interest of, you know, human relations and property values and aesthetic changes, but, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, way back.
My name is Graham Biddley. Margaret Tenasco's son and I also live at 36 Willson Avenue, and I speak on behalf of my mother as well, who lives at 30 Willson Avenue, another one of the five properties. There's a few things, other people have said some of the things that I meant to say, so I'll just try to fill in some gaps. Add another tree to the mix, there's a horse chestnut that's between the existing structure and the proposed structure. It looks like it's, in the new plans, it's crawled several feet towards the property line. I don't think that tree's going to make it, it's a big tree, and if you put a paved driveway, driveway like they have there for the four parking spaces, that'll impact the roots and the canopy of that tree is where the building's going to go. So that's something to consider as well. On any given day, there's between three and eight cars in that gravel parking lot, in addition, I guess, to the ones that are parked on the other side of the building. So where are they going to go when the, when the new parking spaces are put up? That's something I'm concerned about. To complement what Seth said about the traffic, if someone's taking a left turn from Cons onto Maple and they can't get through because there's a line of cars, it causes gridlock across that intersection between Cons and Old South Street. So I don't know if we need a traffic study for Maple Ave, but we definitely need one for that intersection and how it's going to impact that. I've been stuck in, in gridlock there before. And the last thing is, I just want to emphasize what Margaret said about, about the plume of pollution that's underneath this entire property. It's really between 15 and 18 feet down, sitting on top of a layer of clay. And they've done extensive testing at Kaisin Agri's property, which is the other five property on, on Maple Ave. They have not been able to get permission to go into this land from the previous or current owners. They would like to do so because they don't know where this stuff is. All we know is that there are orders coming up, we've been selling them for years. And so we need to let them in there and dig some, dig some test holes so that they can, they can determine, is there a problem and what can we do about it? Or no, there's no, not a problem, great, we don't need to worry about it. And I think that should be a condition for this whole project moving forward. That should be done before any digging happens. I'm still not sure if this is going to be on a slab or if there's a basement, but certainly the, the stormwater infrastructure is going to involve some digging, and we want to know what's down there before that happens. And I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm City Councilor Jim Nash, and for, I know I have to speak to you guys, but there's people in the room talking about the condition of the street and things like that. They can reach out to me through the city website, and so I hope they heard that. That, you know, I, I just want to say that I've been meeting with, you know, both the property owners and people in the neighborhood, and I just want to say there's a lot of nice people here. And that, right now, that because we have this project, there's this tension that's come between all of them. The, the property owners are really nice people, the people who are going to have, you know, who live, you know, a few feet away are also very nice, and, and I'm hoping in the end, no matter what happens, that, that that will continue. And, and I think it will, because they live in Ward 3. The, I, I appreciate some of the discussion that has been going on here around flexibility, around possibly moving or rearranging or something to both accommodate the, the trees and maybe also possibly create a greater rear setback. That I know that there is special conservancy, conservancy here, but we're not talking about an area where the, the, the property is pristine, that this area is pretty degraded. And I think any allowance for maybe a parking space or something towards that area, I don't know the rights, Carolyn will correct me probably right now, but, but that would be great if that could be allowed. I have two questions, and one for the developer, and one is, are these rental or to be sold as condos? And I guess I address.
Take your questions and then we'll.
Okay, great. And the other is, I am concerned about lighting on the back of the building, that, you know, are we going to get floodlights? Because the neighbors right now, what they see out the back is, they see darkness, and you can hear the. and you can hear the broery in the distance, but it's, it's very quiet. And so, um, anything to keep the, the lighting down would be great. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, super. Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Terry, a couple things. So we heard contamination come up several times. Have, have there been any test pits done and is there a-
There are numerous test pits done throughout the site, um, down to 10 feet. Uh, nothing was encountered of being, you know, suspected in terms of cold, cold tar or anything like that. My understanding is that stuff is 15, 20 feet down. Um, what's proposed here for the stormwater is only about, um, six feet, seven feet deep. Uh, so it's not going to be near or anything like that. Test pits were done specifically in the area where the subsurface system is. Test pits were done all around in that proposed remediation area. Uh, and, uh, it's a, nothing, nothing is done.
Are these built, are they slab on grade or are they basements?
These are currently slab on grade.
And how, do you, do you need to excavate for that?
Five feet.
Just to clarify that any issues related to contamination with, uh, based air Columbia Gas is not, um, part of the binding board jurisdiction.
No, I just want to know if it's, if it's an issue, which it is, it sounds like in the neighborhood, if it's like-
Yeah. Um, Tom Drew here is in, in touch with, talking with Columbia.
Yeah, we're going to do that. Uh, so we will do everything to comply, uh, to do everything that is correct. And we have, you know, like a lawyers involved, so.
Okay.
Everything by the book.
Uh, the lighting came up on the, on the back of the unit?
Yeah.
Or exterior lighting in general?
Something if I'm wrong, Tom, but, uh, it's just going to be a standard patio, you know, all scuffs.
Okay. And, uh, we don't have purview on this, but for the sake of our rentals, are, are these being sold or condos or, you know, yeah?
Uh, partly rental. Uh, we were also thinking in the future, we might move in one of the, and the other would be rental.
It'd be intent, I think, is that they could eventually be condos, but currently they're intending to be rentals.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? So public comments still open, let's leave that open while we talk. Um, but any questions for the applicant or amongst ourselves?
I mean, it seems like we're restricted by what we're, what we can do. So, I mean, I'm not exactly sure what-
What we're discussing.
What we're discussing, it's a nice tree, but, you know, time heals, maybe.
A lot of time.
Yeah. Well, one thing we could do is what I was musing about, this require a much larger tree.
Right. So instead of maybe two and a half inch trees, we could have, you know, five, four inch tree, whatever.
Right, yeah, whatever is reasonable. Uh, you know, maybe it's a 10-year-old tree instead of a three-year, I mean, I don't know what.
From my landscape architect, he was heavily saying, do not do that because the chances of them dying is much, much greater.
Well, I, I can imagine that that would be correct, but it would require more care and tending and watering.
He was also saying that they'll take and grow much quicker if you plant the smaller ones, as opposed to large trees, they tend to stagnate. But that, that's what I was told.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know a little bit about trees, I'm certainly not an arborist, but I think if a bigger root ball is properly watered, the tree will grow.
You also need to keep in mind, it is really poor soil out there too.
Well, maybe necessary to bring in soil. I mean, I, I'm, as it's, as has been referred to, uh, this is an unusually magnificent and large tree. Uh, the sycamore is, and even this 24 ash, a 24-inch ash tree that we thought was staying and now is not, that's a big beautiful tree. But the sycamore particularly is unusual and I'd be willing to require some effort to compensate for taking it down.
I, I just, just to follow up on that thread in terms of, um, the benefits of planting a smaller tree, um, the tree warden has indicated that the other issue with planting a larger tree is that it's been a longer time in the nursery and the nursery doesn't really take care of the root ball so they can grow in a way that's not healthy for them, just sitting there as stock, um, as they grow. And so that's another problem you're getting, potentially a tree that already is starting to be root bound, um, the bigger it is and the longer it's staying there growing. And so that's another reason why he certainly has been planting much smaller trees, one inch and, and smaller, because you get it sooner and it hasn't had a chance to develop bad habits of center.
And it seems to me that, I mean, my next door neighbor is not a tree warden, but a tree warden's angel, Rob, who plants lots of trees, he's a tree guy. Uh, I mean, it also seems to me that the time that it could take to lose a big, to lose a big tree for that to be unsuccessful, I mean, could, could be five or 10 years, right? Like, I mean, and so then that, that's, and the, the smaller trees, the amount that they grow in that amount of time is, is pretty astounding. I mean, just in terms of the less that I went to, you're looking at the difference that the tree planting happens have made, pretty astounding.
Right, right. Can we approach it another way and increase the number of normal size trees on a 50% caliber loss, caliber loss?
I mean, the zoning is what it is. So if we start changing the rules for one applicant, then you don't have a standard for everyone to understand what their replacement requirement is. I will say that the tree warden actually went out and measured these trees and the, it's, it's actually hickory, it's not an ash, but it's also 27 inches. I think the hickory he also measured was 48 inches, not 40. So we just have to make sure, yeah. So we just have to make sure we get the right number in terms of replanting.
So one of the comments on, and maybe I should just go through these, Terry, so the comments from staff. One of them, uh, and we can make these conditions if we feel as applicable, um, one of them was complete all tree replacement necessary for the 64 inches of significant trees removed for this project in accordance with zoning. So I don't know if that's, that 64 number is in reference to-
Would be 75 now without modification.
Okay. So I don't know if that 75 inches represents what's shown in the drawings right now or-
No, it's just from whatever was given to me from the survey.
Yeah. So-
So is the three trees add up to the total of 75? Yeah.
So if we need 75 inches of tree replacement and we're looking at 50 inches of tree replacement, do we have, is there room on the drawings to add three, four, six, more trees?
Yeah, I mean, there's the whole, um, this whole area is all sumac, um, sucker growth. Um, and that could easily be beat up with better quality stock. Uh, you know, this, most, most of it, the whole perimeter actually, there's a fair amount of significant trees, um, along this whole edge, uh, in here. Uh, you know, I, there's tons and tons of that, but it's all kind of open, all out in here.
Is there enough room to put them, put new trees on the back of the building to give some benefit to the abutters?
No, I think, I think the 20 feet, you know, for anything that's going to grow of any size, no, no.
Can you show the tree protection plan again? Somebody asked about the tree that's between 25 and the proposed building.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about before, this tree right here.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the tree protection, um, on the arborist recommendation is that it extend, um, to the, the very limit of the, what they minimally need, need to excavate for the footings for the building. Uh, and the arborist is, is, should be out there to oversee where that, where that placement is. That, and along with protection regarding this driveway, this parking area.
Okay. I'm just going to, uh, finish, Terry, the, these are comments from the staff, proposed conditions. Uh, number one, since they revised plans to incorporate any plan changes from the hearing, we've gone through that. Uh, number two, uh, shall install tree protection as recommended by the arborist and shall have this inspected by the city. Uh, three was the, the tree replacement, so for now 75 inches of, of the trees. Uh, $5,000 in blue, uh, for, uh, blue of traffic mitigation. Uh, five, submit lighting as built to show compliance with zoning at no greater than three-foot candles and no lure, uh, for light temperature than 3,000 K. Uh, and any other conditions that have been come up with tonight. So I don't know if you have any issues with, with those?
No, that's, that's a little weird.
And so one of those would be a storm, prior to certificate of occupancy, a stormwater maintenance plan, um, shall be reviewed and then, uh, approved by the city, but then go on record in the first 15 days.
Is this going to be a recorded plan? Is it going to be like the stormwater permit recording?
Um, yes, it would have to go on, it can go with the, uh, permit decision, so it would get reported with the decision.
Okay.
Is there anything that can be done to mitigate the impact on the abutters to the rear? You have any-
There is a fence proposed across the back.
Yeah, I want to go back.
Planting plants, there's a picket fence, I think they call it.
There's, there's apparently stockade fences and then this is still in a gap.
The stockade fence only goes halfway.
Yeah, there's a stockade fences on the, on the abutting property also.
Says proposed six-foot stockade fence that goes halfway down the-
Right. And then if you look, there's, there's also fence on the, on, just on the other side of the line too, for the abutting property.
Currently owned by the abutters.
Yes.
So it just fills in the gap basically.
Yeah.
Could we continue that fence, um, with negotiation with the abutters so it's consistent across the back line?
What, to connect the abutters fence?
In front of the abutters fence perhaps.
Well, that's what's proposed, it's right in front of the abutters. Are you talking about two fences?
No, 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 I'm talking about extending it. So the abutters, I see Margaret Jerry here and it stops at the garage more or less and then beyond the garage is just, um, brush and woods?
No, there's, there's another fence that goes all the way down to the corner of the property.
Right, but there's no abutter you're telling me there? So what I'm saying is, wouldn't it be nice to, um, extend that stockade fence uniformly to the end of the units?
It, it does, it does. That's what I'm saying. On the abutting property, there is a stockade fence there, that's why we did not propose it.
So you're going to match that stockade fence?
Yeah, it's just a standard stockade.
I didn't understand. Okay. I want to go back to your last comment about, um, when it was suggested that perhaps we plant some small trees. There's 20 feet between the back, the back of the building and the fence? Okay, well, currently in the city now, we plant trees along the tree belt, um, you know, close to the sidewalk and these trees are chosen because they only grow about 20 feet tall, 25 feet tall. And their root systems kind of go down as opposed to over.
Yep.
So I think there may be some plantings you could do there that would soften, um, within a number of years, the look for the neighbors. Um, and I'm sure you could work with this arborist of yours to find-
David, David Payne's the landscape architect. Um, so, yeah, we could, we could talk about what would be appropriate.
I think that would, that would help quite a bit. Did David measure the trees too?
Uh, the, the-
I'm sorry, that's, that's-
Scratch that from there. No, no, he did not. We hired an arborist, Chris Ryan, to do, to do that review.
Um, so are you suggesting, um, you might, you want to be specific to say a shade tree, um, one per unit or something?
Yeah. Yeah. I think that would help. That's a good suggestion though.
And something is planted right along the fence, you're saying?
Pretty much, well, you know, off the fence a little bit.
Yeah.
But I'm sure he'll have some recommendations that-
Yeah.
Yeah, scratching one per unit.
Yeah, as long as they fit, I, I think, those are, oh, it's kind of open to that.
I want to go back to one other little, um, comment that I was, when I suggested moving the, uh, the whole structure to the southeast towards unit, toward, uh, house number 25 on Maple Street, you know, we said that, um, there are, there, we would run into setback problems.
We'd have to change the whole design to actually-
But isn't this one entire parcel of land, so the setback requirement-
I think he was referring to the rear, the setback to the, um-
The front and rear setback is what's limiting it right now.
As opposed to the setback between the buildings.
But if it came directly back towards where in my plans it says two spaces and it took over that parking area, I don't think it would, the, the distance between the rear setback and the rear of the buildings would stay the same. Those space, you have those spaces to be relocated to the-
Well, the, the building would have to get narrower as you go, as you slide it to the left.
Because of the-
It is pushed as far as it can because of the front setback and the rear setback.
So the rear setback, if you did that, it would, it would seem to run parallel. The front setback, would it pinch if you brought it down?
Yes, because the, the setback angle.
So that's what's the, the issue's not the rear, um, setback front.
The other issue is it would probably trigger, um, a fire, different fire code for the existing 25. I mean, that would have to be addressed with fire suppression potential.
Because of the proximity of the new building to the existing building.
If you wanted to be a, a budding that building, it would change the whole side.
The, the existing building there, you'll notice is very non-conformant. It's in terms of its setback and, yeah, I mean, it's like six feet or something.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Some public comments still open. Was there, yeah?
Just want to add, rental is a weed, is a rare bird and that's a good thing. And so I welcome that idea for new development. Thank you.
Public comment is still open, so anybody else that would like to comment on this? Who hasn't? Okay.
Can I have a second, Terry?
Sure.
So, I'm not respectfully, but the man who's planting all the trees all around town told me that red cedar is a great tree. It's, it's, uh, evergreen and it makes a nice hedge, it's narrow and it satisfies the town's requirements as far as the diameter when you're replacing other trees. So we'd be delighted with a red cedar hedge. Um, this is a tall, narrow, long box of buildings being shoehorned as close to our, our house as it can possibly be. It's literally going to boom large, uh, above our backyard. So anything we're concerned about noise and light and privacy, um, so that hedge, you know, I like the idea of shade trees, but they're going to drop their leaves and we're staring at a wall in winter, so a hedge would be better. Um, also, I'd just like to emphasize what everyone else has been saying about, can we please reconfigure this so it's not as close as, you know, possible to our house? If you turn it 180 degrees, we'd have a parking lot as a buffer. I understand that there's issues, but if you can put a parking lot there, why can't you just put a building there? Why can't if you reconfigure creatively instead of just trying to put a, a box down? It'd be a tiny space.
Thanks. Okay. Yep.
I guess my question is, because we didn't talk, um, much about the problems with the Maple Avenue being a small street and adding traffic to that. What's the proper, um, setting or proper resources that we should reach out to to talk about the, um, the problem with the intersection in that, that street?
Might have a sidebar conversation with our councilor.
Yeah.
It's behind you. Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, let's leave this open as we go through everything. So I had a couple, um, not many, but a couple, um, potential conditions we would, uh, talk about in addition to the staff recommendations, none of which the applicant had an issue with. Um, one was the turnaround that Sam brought up, uh, with adequate markings, uh, on the pavement or signage, uh, for no parking. We've got the DPW comments, uh, the stormwater maintenance plan and plantings along the abutters edge, uh, one per unit, five total, potentially red cedar or in- One per unit, five total, potentially red cedar or maybe in concert with the, the tree warden with the city.
If that red cedar could be a hedge instead.
I think maybe you could just specify evergreen, and that the tree warden wouldn't be involved in this conversation because it's private property, so it's really gonna be between the landscape architect and the, I mean, I wanna work with that.
So maybe evergreen, and we would trust that the applicant would work in good faith with the Butters to find something that would. Yeah, any other issues that I didn't pick up or that anybody else has?
So are we down to just the regular two-and-a-half inch caliper?
Put that to bed, yeah, but it sounds like it.
Can we push it a little? Does that make sense? I don't know.
The number has increased just because.
Yes, it should, but what about the size of it?
Just seems like the experts seem to say that larger isn't actually better. I mean, since I know nothing other than I like the look of the tree.
Anything's gonna make us happy, you know, that we're taking forty-inch of tree down, so I don't know if it's, whether it's a two-inch or a three-inch, I think we're all pretty long that it's coming down. I think that, for me, the important thing was, whatever we put down, is make sure it's healthy and it can grow healthy, so. I like the idea of plunking something nice and fat there, but the professionals are saying that's not necessarily the best thing to do, then. I think we should go with what the professionals say, 'cause honestly, nothing's gonna really feel, nothing's really gonna feel great now that we're losing.
Well, even with the smaller trees, you're still playing the odds a little bit, you put in six trees, one of them, two of them might not make it, you know, if you put in, you know, two big trees, we lose fifty percent of them, that's. And we don't, it doesn't happen until five, ten years down the road, then.
Right.
Unfortunately, there are a number of other good-sized trees on the lot that aren't coming down, I mean, it doesn't speak to the sycamore, but there are still, still pretty much a wooded lot towards the river.
So somehow the wisdom, the tree wisdom, instead of two-and-a-half inch caliper, is most likely to succeed over the long term?
It's probably the maximum size that you'd wanna plant for good success. The, the tree warden is really pushing for the smallest.
They're still fifteen, sometimes fifteen, twenty feet tall.
Two-and-a-half inch caliper?
Yeah.
Yeah, like that, but they're still very.
Twice as long as you need.
So public comment's still open.
Move that we closed public there.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Okay. Uh, so public discussion comment is, is closed, so we're gonna talk amongst ourselves. Any other comments from the board?
Would you go over the list of?
So in addition to, so we had staff comments, staff recommendations, submit revised plans to incorporate any plan changes from the hearing. Install tree protection as recommended by the arborist and have this inspected by the city. Then, prior to issuance of our certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall complete all tree replacement necessary for the now seventy-five inches of significant trees removed for this project in accordance with zoning, as offered, pay five thousand dollars in traffic mitigation. Submit lighting as built to show compliance with the zoning at no greater than three-foot candles and no bluer than three thousand K. And any other conditions tonight, which would include the turnaround that Sam suggested with adequate markings or signage, the DPW comments that Carolyn thread earlier, the stormwater maintenance plan, evergreen plantings along the Butters edge.
Now, what we're approving, what, what, if, I mean, the proposal is for the plan showing twelve.
Carolyn, you mentioned the, about the trees in the public way, is that something that we need to be learned about, or the tree wardens working on that? Does that factor into the tree replacement?
No, it's gonna be separate, so what happens is, anytime someone proposes to remove trees in the public way, that would go through the process by DPW, the tree wardens would facilitate that.
Okay, so that will, that will be addressed.
I'm sure about the parking, but the, the four spaces immediately behind number twenty-five, could those just be occupied by people living in twenty-five? I guess they could.
So actually there's.
The whole project will, and in the end, on one parcel will be seven units.
With fourteen parking spaces. None handicap access, none marked handicap.
And I guess the most that can fit in there behind twenty-five is folk.
Right, they're two tandem slots, so two spaces next to each other in tandem space.
So we've got closed public comment, we've got a list of conditions, looking for a motion.
Just real quickly, one, one, the special conservancy, I, I don't see that kinda laid out here on the plan, could you point that to me again, how close that is to?
So there's, so if you look on the right side of your plan.
Existing conditions.
Yeah, well, that one that's on the screen now, the planting plan, it says, there's that arrow that's coming across the screen, that's at the boundary of urban residential seed versus special conservancy, and special conservancy is not about open space protection, it's about floodplain.
Right. So even though the high water line has been marked here, it's pretty low down those slopes, they're still, this is still in the floodplain?
Well, it, you have to do onsite study to determine where the floodplain is.
Uh-huh.
And then you'd have to, right, and then you'd have to go through a rezoning process.
So the fact that it's special conservancy is why they're able to put parking lots in that zone, because that's just floodplain?
Right, so it's not residential use, you can put parking.
I move that we approve this five-unit project on Maple.
Maple Avenue.
Maple Avenue. I move that we support site plan, five, a site plan for five new residential units, twenty-five Maple Avenue, Hampton FID, thirty-two C, seventy-one, seventy-two, with the, how many conditions are there?
I have three, four.
Six?
With the ten, uh, uh, conditions that Mark read.
You got a motion?
Second.
Second, discussion?
Just remind me again, Carolyn, because of the proximity and two-hundred-foot river, that still has to go through the cons comm permit process. In our experience, no conditions that they put on that jeopardizes kind of the approval that we're providing now, the layout. 'Cause if the, if the layout of the houses gets moved for some reason, or the stormwater gets altered.
Then it would be their risk, they'd have to come back to us.
They'd have to come back to us. I always wished that, that cons comm went first, rather than us, because we have so much to do with the footprint and the layout, and it seems a little bit backwards.
So we got a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Yep. All right, thank you, and you're approved.
Continue.
When you speak, you can pass the ball.
Sure, get a helper, Hannah White could do that for you. I got what you're saying now. Wayne, I thought you were gonna chime in on the Mill River there.
Uh, so we're taking a, a brief administrative break, I actually have to recuse myself for the next hearing, so George will be taking over on my behalf, and Carolyn had a run out for a second, she'll be back in a minute, and we'll take over from there, so just a one or two minutes. Well, the first five slides is next slide. They're usually normally off, but normally we have lights, but.
So we've gotten a request to speak out before the board, to reject like the grade school job, I'd say.
Yeah, yeah. I apologize, everybody. I have to recuse myself from this one.
Oh, I do tour.
A couple of you.
So you think you'd help all of them?
Yes, yes.
I agree with that.
I agree with that as well.
I think it was put on, and I'm like, oh, we're all set with this. Wait, I, no candy, and you got what?
Yeah, unfortunately you don't have a tool. All right.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the planning board. Um, we're about to open up a site plan amendment by the city of North Hampton for drainage lot layout at Burke Pit Road, Florence Matt, IDs twenty-nine to ten, six seventeen, thirty-six to four-ten, to map four-seventeen. And Mr. Fine, you have a presentation for us, a little overview?
Yes, so Wayne, by direct plan sustainability, so this property is owned by the city of North Hampton, and I'm the city's agent for this property. Just, some of you were involved with us two years ago when we came before the board, just wanna take you back down, down memory lane to two thousand seventeen, so what, what you have before you is the first slide of the presentation you gave in two thousand seventeen, and the background is, we came before you for a, both a special permit and site plan approval to carve out a hundred and twenty-one acres of permanently protected open space, create ten new building lots on the bottom-left corner, and allow two existing building lots in the upper-right corner to remain. And, and the bottom-left is really what we're talking about today, the, so that the overall permit you gave us is called cluster permit or open space residential developments, and carved out those, those ten building lots in the bottom, so that, that was approved by you at the time. That's a special permit, you just had a conversation for the last project about what's discretionary and what isn't. The special permit you gave us two years ago was a discretionary permit, you could've approved it, you could've denied it. The board chose to approve the permit based on that and the full reliance on the permit, we subdivided the bottom-left and created ten building lots, and we transferred the, and we acquired that land from the developer, and simultaneous the conservation commission, which is sort of a different entity within the city, acquired a hundred and twenty-one acres and became permanently protected open space, in doing so, we exercised the permit, so there's no question that permit expired, now, you know, we've used that land. And so we protected the land, the other thing is the traffic mitigation at the time, the red line is off a little bit, but the traffic mitigation time you approved is us building a nine-tenths a mile bike path to knit together three different neighborhoods, that bike path was just, we began about a year ago, and that path is just completed a couple of weeks ago. So we've already completed the, the traffic mitigation part of the process. The permit you issued, again, allowed ten single-family home lots, under zoning, single-family home lots are all allowed to have accessory permits by right. So, they could've been ten single-family homes, they could've been ten homes with accessory apartments, or for anything in between that process. This again is what, what you approved at the time. Since that time, we've done a few requests for proposals, some failed, some didn't, or for developers, some failed and some didn't. So the summary is, the two lots on the left, lots one and two are privately held, we haven't picked out of that, we basically, the conservation commission paid less money for the open space, in, in return for paying less money to the developer, kept two of those building lots, so they're owned by, to feed and associate, the same people we bought the rest of the property from. The other eight lots are all owned by the city, they're all under deposit for three separate buyers. There are three lots that are going to habitat for humanity, for affordable homes, we're giving them to a free dollar, that, that was always our plan for doing it. One lot is being sold for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but we're not actually getting the cash, we are, you know, we're paying a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we're buying a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of open space from the same person, so it's effectively a swap, because of the procurement standards, it's not legally a swap, but it is a swap in all intents and purposes. And that open space is about a hundred yards away from us, so it's in the same area. And then four lots, we did a request for, a request for BIBs. And then four lots, we did a request for bids with a couple failed bids, and the final one is another private party for that property. And so the special permit is not before you. The main conditions, the site plan approval, remain in effect. There are three changes that we're hoping you're gonna consider tonight. One is a relatively small property boundary changes to meet Habitat's management request. Originally, we had two lots in one area, on one driveway and one lot on another driveway. They want all three lots to share the same driveway. It's easier for maintenance purposes. And then they now have an architect onboard. The architect wants some minor changes. So that's one change to meet Habitat's request. The second one is all the homes where turning the homes a little bit to maximize solar gain. It's the city's goal and Habitat's goal and many developers' goal to have as much, you know, as little energy use as possible, and so changing. So those two, I think, are both very minor. And then the more significant one is the drainage. Our original hope was we would do drainage on each lot. Each lot would respond off their own. From a green standpoint, that's really appealing, right? All the water drains into the site, everyone's responsible for their own. But it became a nightmare in terms of sequencing. The problem with everyone doing their own drainage is you had to have a sequencing plan for who could go first and who could go second. We originally thought we were able to predict that, and it became hard to predict who would go first. So instead, the plan is to have basically centralized drainage, more like what you typically see. And this was all possible because the person who's buying the four lots agreed to build that drainage system. So instead of dividing up, so he's gonna take care of the part that Habitat is responsible for, as well as what he would be responsible for. So that's the part that makes it possible. Then two last slides I'm gonna turn over to the engineer to present the details, but just so you know where it came from. When we went to city council, we were very clear to city council that the goal was to include some affordable lots. And in fact, city council pushed back, and they wanted more lots to be affordable. So affordability is a key part of this. It was not a condition of your permit two years ago, and obviously it's not a site plan approval condition. But we are proud of the affordability. We'd like to maximize the affordability of any city project that we do. And then finally, we are not like private developers. If I was a private developer trying to get the biggest return, we probably wouldn't do 10 lots. But we see the lots as three important purposes. Providing affordable housing, which is an important city goal. Also providing sort of mid-market housing. So we're trying to push the market to smaller homes. So even if it's a market-grade house, a four-tenths of an acre lot, a five-tenths of an acre lot, a six-tenths of an acre lot is gonna sell for less than a big lot. And that's the so-called missing middle. The market's not doing a good job for that. Again, that's been clearly articulated in our open space plans, clearly articulated in plans before council. And in fact, it's part of our open space strategy. We have a clear goal, and we do open space not to be artificially inflating the value of land. So we're buying a little bit over one-half percent of open space in the city every city. So in the entire city, half a percent every single year is going to open space. And we've been doing this for 25 years, so it becomes significant. And so as we're taking that land off the market, we have a deliberate goal of creating enough building lots that we're countering our making land more expensive. So we don't just want... you know, even if we had unlimited money, we wouldn't just wanna protect 122 acres. We'd wanna create 10 building lots so that we're not making it more expensive. So that's sort of the background. Mark Darnold was hired by the person who's buying four lots, not by the city, but we've given permission going forward. And obviously, they buy the land and they will be able to design. So I'll turn over to Mark.
Again, this is going over, this was the previously approved plan. And I'm gonna concentrate my presentation on the changes, not necessarily the entire project, because the project has been previously approved. Just to highlight the property changes, these two homes here were on the zero lot line. And so the proposal is to take one house, slide it to the left, the other house slide it to the right. And then I can take this house that's on the far right and slide it over here too. So depending on the proposed scenario, we'd have these three houses located together on a single driveway. The other aspect is the drainage that we're going to... we'll hit further. But just note that the change in the project, we still have four driveways, we still have the same utilities, we still have 10 lots. That's the thing that has not changed. The drainage, as you'll see here, there's all these small detention basins, channels, swales, rain gardens, et cetera. And it does work as a whole project, but again, if everything's built, everything's done, the project works wonderful. But if only half of it were done, it wouldn't be. And also created somewhat of an issue with managing it and reporting it to DDW. They would have to check and see each one of these things were working properly. So this is the proposed plan. Again, as I explained before, these three houses are the ones for Habitat. And essentially, we simply put them together on a single common drive, and essentially had expanded lot number 10 to where that house used to be. Sort of simplistic scenario. This also shows the drainage, can highlight it later. But we wind up essentially with one very shallow detention basin in this location. And we also wind up with a sort of larger detention basin in this location. These detention basins would be managed by the homeowners association. Each individual lot would not have to worry about its own little scenario. Again, going to highlights. This is sort of more of a graphical scenario. The blue lines were what was previously approved. What we're proposing to do is essentially erase that small section of line there and create this new lot, number seven, which would be here. So lot number five would be this location, lot number seven would be here, and lot number nine would be here. And that's really the lot change we are proposing, other than expanding the site of lot number 10. And this is a highlight of the drainage, making a large snapshot to show you the difference. Each one of these blue areas were the proposed small drainage areas, detention areas, rain gardens, et cetera. And we're eliminating all those blue lines, blue scenarios. And again, it looks like a very large detention basin. It is sort of large, it's around, I think it's around 7,000 square feet. But it's only about one and a half inches, one and a half, one and a half feet deep in a 100-year storm. And it's very, very gradual coming down. And essentially, it's at grade right now. Essentially, the driveway dams up one end of a large swale that traverses through the site. And it's a very shallow area, allows the water to pond during a storm, slowly leave the area. It wouldn't be remaining a usable area for the neighbors to utilize, because most of the time, it would just be a lawn area, with tanks of trees. Same thing in this scenario, very small, I mean, very shallow, approximately 18 inches in a 100-year storm. It's not deep, very gradual side slopes to accommodate that. So it's not likely to go fall off the edge into one of these scenarios. This is maybe helps a little bit, maybe confusing a little bit. The drawing on top was the previously approved, and the one right below it is the proposed. And again, highlighting that really the only changes happen... Happened in these lot configurations. And then elimination of all this drainage area to a detention basin here, and a detention basin there, so it becomes much simpler. The drainage has been submitted to mass, I mean, a DDP. They reviewed it, it's a complex set of calculations on 200 pages. But we were issued a stormwater permit from DDP this morning. So they have reviewed it, approved the drainage calculations, confirmed it at this point.
And why, let me ask, DDP rather than our?
I'm sorry, DPW. I misspoke.
That's alright. We'd still be here.
Yeah. So I think that's the big question. The changes that we're proposing is lot configuration, drainage. We did twist all of the houses, and that sort of slides into my next scenario about trees. We did try to slide all the houses to be solar-oriented. And Habitat was very specific. They definitely want their houses to be solar-oriented. And they are definitely, without question, gonna go net zero. So that's a given for them. The rest of development, we are talking about doing it, and we wanna orient all these houses to be solar-oriented. But we haven't fully committed to being net zero on those houses. And this slide here, just to highlight, the large green trees that you see, those are existing significant trees that we're proposing to maintain. So, you know, we have to clear area to put the houses, we have to clear areas to put the driveways. But we did retain many of the significant trees that we felt possibly do. We had arborists go out, review the site. Almost all the trees, the significant trees are oak. They're in good to fair condition. And none of them died, so they were good. Not the greatest trees in the world, but they're all good in condition. We are removing a significant number of trees out on the site. We're removing 20 significant trees, retaining what you see there. But that's a fact of development, and we just had to do that. We are fully intending to comply with the tree ordinance. And we have shown what we propose to put the new trees in there is the lightly colored ones. Colors don't come up too well in here, but they come up better on the screen. So we're proposing to add all of these trees, and we calibrated the number of inches that we're proposing to put in there. In front of the Habitat for Humanity lots, we have low-growth trees that won't cover their solar capacity. And we fit what we felt was an appropriate number of trees on the site. We would love to restore all the tree that we need to here. But I think just throwing more trees on here would not make it a viable scenario. So we're approximately 82 inches of diameter shy. And that needs to be addressed either through payment or planning off-site. And so that will have to be addressed. But we could just continue throwing on here, but I think it would not be healthy for the site to have too many trees. It's a wooded site as well.
What is the total number that you are replacing or replating, you know?
We're proposing to install 177 inches. That's what we have shown on the plan here. So we removed 20 trees for a total of 398 inches. Required to replace it at one half, so we're required to replace 199 inches. And we did replace 177 of those. But my math is wrong here.
Right, right. Because you were thinking, you were saying you were adding two inches.
It's on this portion right here, but I don't see that we have a... But the numbers are tallied up here, so we have, we're 82 additional inches that we have to comply with. Next slide is something that we wanted to talk about, is on the solar orientation perspective. What we have shown is okay, but we... the board has the ability to weigh the requirements for replacement of restoration of significant trees that we moved. And what we're asking the board tonight, sort of aside issue, is... We are showing this tree being removed, and we're suggesting that we could request the board grant a waiver for replacing that, because we're removing that tree solely for the purpose of supplying solar access to this house. In addition to that, these other houses that we have highlighted here, we're not 100% committed at this point in time to do net zero. But these other houses, or these other trees that I have highlighted, if these houses decided to go net zero, then it will make sense to remove these additional significant trees for solar purposes. And so we're not sure exactly how the board would like to do that. We'd like to have the board make it possibly conditional that they agree that the one tree in front of Habitat is net zero, and we don't have to restore that. The other trees, if they go net zero, can make the decision, come through an administrative process, allow us to remove those trees for solar purposes without requirements for restoration.
Excuse me, I'm confused by your referring to... You're not being decided as to whether to go net zero, but I thought you sold, did you say, three or four of the lots to a private developer? If so, isn't it their decision what to do?
That's correct. We've allowed these houses solar-oriented, but that doesn't mean they're gonna be net zero. So if they decide...
It's totally out of your control, isn't it? If someone else owns it.
Correct. But if they do go solar, I mean, do go net zero, I'm sorry, they would like to remove this tree to allow full solar access to the house.
Does that part of your application for land that you don't own?
Well, maybe it would be helpful to clarify. In the zoning, there, and actually, there is a provision that allows an applicant to apply for essentially a waiver if you meet certain conditions, including affordability and protection of open space and/or net zero. So you have to do net zero plus affordable housing or open space protection. So they haven't applied for that permit here. I did talk with the prospective buyer about that option. It's actually a special permit request to the planning board. So anyone who wants to do, take advantage of that, not only has to meet the criteria in the zoning, but actually has to apply specifically for that. So that is probably then going to be just a heads-up that if, in the event, the person has a final design and moves forward with the project, they would come to you and say, okay, this tree is gonna affect my net zero. I would like to have it, I'd like to not do the tree replacement calculation because I'm needing these standards and this happening.
At this point, though, I'm sorry, at this point, the city owns the lot?
Right, right.
So it's a possible bidder, but...
Right, well, Habitat has an option, has an option to buy, but they don't own them. And they have indicated they want to be net zero.
So at this point, the city owns all 10 lots?
No, we own eight of the 10.
The two of them.
So the city still owns eight. We know that Habitat wants to do net zero, but they will actually have to put in a separate application. I just got the language here. It does say it's a special permit, it's not site plan. So you can't necessarily prove that tonight, but you have a heads-up that that may be. And then by that time, the other non-Habitat lots, there might be more clarity about whether or not those buildings are gonna be designed for net zero by the time they would apply, obviously.
We're presenting the site plan, so it makes you aware that this may happen in the future. So there's no surprises associated with that. And then I think the last slide is, this was a... It's got your plan prepared by the arborists to go out and look at the site, number of trees, and may specify recommendations about some of the trees as during construction, to be observed during construction and in special care to trees, and also recommendations, even some of the trees that we're not using to make some enhancements to those existing trees. That's a real quick summary. I'd be glad to go into any details regarding, again, the lot reconfiguration and the drainage. It's really the two things we're changing. And because of the changing, we are altering the number of trees that were previously proposed to be removed, and the number of trees proposed to be removed with the result of this operation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Darnold before we open the public hearing? Okay, well, thanks. So at this point in time, we'd like to hear from the public. Why don't we start with this gentleman? Your name and address for the record when you come up to the podium. Thanks.
My name is Barry Roth. I live on 88 April Drive in Florence, Massachusetts. I am a brother of the conservation, of the first pod conservation area. I'm here because I am... well, first of all, let me ask you. Is George, are you George Cole?
Yeah, I'm George Cole.
Okay. You remember, I had to track you down in order to get you to return the green card for the court during the certified?
I remember, yes.
Yeah, it took me quite a bit of time. Is Euripides Nidhi Olivera here?
I'm here, present.
Hi. Are you aware of the fact that you were defendant in a court case that was just held before the John Adams Appeals Court in downtown Boston? You're defendant in an appeals court? Yeah, I didn't think you were. I'm sorry. This hearing is totally out of order. It should not be taking place right now. Is Kristi Renati here? Kristi, are you aware that you are a defendant in a court case that just was held on October 8th in downtown Boston at the John Adams Courthouse, that the hearing is, a judgment is pending? Okay, I want you to be aware of the fact that you are named as a defendant. Is Alan Versen here? Is Alan Versen here?
Yep.
You two are named as a defendant in the court case that was just held on October 8th in downtown Boston.
I would defend him if I was never served.
Well, I think we may have had a card of you as yet, not me. Well.
So I would just say, Christie and Yuri, if I may interrupt very quickly, I've been named in any number of appeals and court cases during my tenure on the planning board. It does happen. Don't worry, the magistrate's not going to come in here with handcuffs tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Well, no, I just want to make these folks aware that this is something that happens as a course of.
If it ended there, there would be no problem. We have a problem because it didn't end there. I understand there are differences. I think you have a right as members of this planning board hearing to understand why the case went to court and understand what the, what the arguments that are taking place at the court are. The city of Northampton, along with Emerson Way, the built, a proposed developer, has argued before the court that in cases of subdivision where improper notification has been given, there is, there is no penalty to be paid. In other words, the net result is that the city does not have to notify anybody about public hearings. In fact, if you look around, a lot of people aren't here tonight because they were never notified about this hearing, even though they have a vital stake in what happens on this subdivision lot. This, they have argued, and the city is a part of this, they have argued that while zoning ordinances require 90 days where there is a failure of notification, that subdivision law does not require 90 days. I think it's a posthrist argument and I believe that the appeals vote will find and will rule as such. So let us go one step further. When this original hearing had to do with the subdivision over here, none of the, the only people who were notified about it were the abutters of Emerson Way, which was a complete error. You're supposed to notify the abutters of where work is to be done under subdivision law. That was not done. I went to Wayne Fiden, Yuri Long of Northampton, and asked him, why? Okay, look, I take that back. I appreciate he works very hard for the city and he has, and he generally has the city best interested heart. And I appreciate all the hard work he does. I, that was, I said that because of my personal interactions with him. He's acted, in my particular case, with a great deal of arrogance. He's dismissed.
Let's not get into these, you know, asshole things.
Okay, so let's, let's go to the next step. So the question becomes, how when you are, I went to Carolyn Mish and I asked her, I said, the case was just heard on October 8th. How is it proper that all these people who have a vest, who are defendants in the case, should be ruling on this hearing? It doesn't make any sense, you know? Why didn't I just hold it off? Hold it off for a few weeks? The, no answer, we're moving ahead. So I said, my question is, why doesn't someone check with, it, it, it was 15 years ago that Emerson Way sought to move the project. 15 years ago, Emerson Way sought to build on other conservation land, which is now Emerson Way, and they got a special permit to be able to build there. The only reason they got that permit was that they agreed to build a number of affordable units. When it came time to actually build them, they decided they wanted to move into Birch Pit, this, this, this thing over here. The question is, this birch bog subdivision. The question is, was, was it proper for them to be allowed by the planning board hearing here, these, to grant them that permission to do so? I was not notified. I thought they had a right to be at that hearing to discuss it, as do all the people who were invited to the Birch Bog subdivision. Nobody was invited and did not have a chance to speak to it. So what the court will rule on is the legitimacy of the very people who want to do much of the building here. How is it possible to go ahead and have this hearing in any meaningful way when, if the court rules, as I believe they will, that the city acted improperly and illegally in the notification, how is it possible for any, for this hearing to make a vote today? It makes no sense.
Mr. Roth, I think you've stated your case very well and I think we understand.
And now.
Excuse me a minute. So we do need to go on because there are other people here who want to speak to this situation here on Birch Pit Road and not our previous decision.
Let him finish.
Well, he could go on for quite a while, I think.
No, I don't have that long to go, but maybe, maybe a few more minutes. So my question is, has the city bothered to call up? The city says it's an urgent, that this, this, this hearing couldn't wait. Well, has the city bothered to call up the court and ask them when the ruling will be forthcoming? Has the city called up and asked the courthouse to expedite the hearing? I doubt it. First of all, you know, I'm not an expert on the, on the land. I, I know all this stuff over here. There are other people who will argue the case tonight and they'll do a good job of arguing why. I know I live on that land and I know that it is bogland. I know that we have holes of lakes forming. It's not suitable for construction. And the whole issue here is that it is, we've built on every arable land that's available. So now we've got to build high density land on a bogland? Makes no sense at all. I can't go into the details, other people will. But the whole attitude of Wayne and just telling me, hey, hey, I made the decision, you don't count. And that attitude towards the whole members of the community has just been an absolute outlet.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have a question. So outside of the fact that you don't like the, the, no one notified someone, why are you against this project?
I think it's way too dense of a property.
All right, thank you.
So does anyone else who'd like to speak in favor or against this proposal? Do I have to, in favor first? Oh, it doesn't matter, Sergeant. Come up. There's no, no, that's okay. We'll find out soon enough.
All right. Uh, my name is Steve Callahan and I live at 824 Birch Pit Road. Hey, I will try not to go through what Barry's already gone through. But I'm asking that you table this motion and suspend any action on this until there's been a legitimate public hearing and a discussion of the procedures that went through to get this approved. Did you pass out that sheet?
Oh, yeah.
Well, if you see the sheet, you have the sheet.
Excuse me, can I ask a procedural question? Could you explain what it is that has been apparently appealed to some court?
Yes.
Was it the original decision?
The original, the original decision was filed, the appeal was filed one day late. Statute of limitations. It went to Superior Court and the Superior Court said, I can't rule.
The decision granting them a permit to build the 10 units.
Right.
Is that right? Is that what, that's what we're doing?
Yeah, at the, you know, the meeting in July.
This is not about the 10 units. The 10 lots that's in front of the board right now.
No.
Um, what they're describing is a concern that, um, about the decision the board made on a different comment at Emerson Way. An amendment to a subdivision at Emerson Way. It doesn't have anything to do with the permit in front of the now.
It does. It does because it's a continuation of the illegal act and they continue moving forward. They heard the case in Boston on the 8th. All of a sudden at night, everybody gets a postcard, a mail post, everybody except me, because I have been notified once and four times it's been before this thing. So after a week, I went in and I said, hey, I'm an abutter. Why wasn't I noticed, notified? And son of a gun, the post guy didn't show up two days later, but predated back to the 6th. And I asked Mr. Biden, he said, he leaned back and smiled and said, hey, I'm not responsible for the mayor. But he might have been responsible for the three, three previous meetings in which there was no notification. I want to know how you can advertise for a reallocation, an allocation of six existing units and then at Emerson Way and then vote on moving six units out of Emerson Way to Birch Bog when you're not even allowed to discuss Birch Bog unless it's on that agenda? In the open meeting law, you're not allowed to discuss it. Three of you couldn't get together and have a cup of coffee and discuss anything because that's a quorum or whatever. Those three people voted that was a quorum. But I want somebody to tell me who wrote the description that appears in the agenda. And I'm assuming it's you, is that correct?
For the legal votes, yes.
It is, it is.
Okay, so you wrote it and can you read it to me?
I'd be glad to read it to you again.
Okay.
It's the same language that we opened up the hearing with, which is, uh, we're opening up a site plan amendment by the city of Northampton for changes to drainage, lot layout at Birch Pit Road, Florence map ID 2910, 617, 36410 to 417.
Right. And I'm saying to you, until you have a legal public meeting in which the public is notified, you cannot continue moving on with this project. I want to ask you this again, just the procedure on this project. Who in charge of this project? Mr. Biden? He says he's the agent of the seller. Does he get to rule when I went and say I wasn't notified? Does he get to, and I said to him, I don't have time to prepare anything tonight because I've got three days. I should have had, you know, 14 days. And then he said, oh, hey, what can I do? I'm not willing to delay it. And this is being pushed through. And I want to show an example of it being pushed through. On the 26th of June, Mr. Batteries sent a letter with a suggestion. He says, wait, have I got a deal for you? Okay? I have that units. I'll spend $250,000 if you move those units out of Emerson Way and down the street. That, that's what he said on June 26th. Did he discuss it with anybody in terms of is that an appropriate procedure? Did he get a solicitation to move modern income housing? You people voted on it in less than a month. Did you discuss it? Was it reviewed by the legal department? It was so shameful that somebody risked criminal action, okay, in terms of deliberately, deliberately distorting what's going on. And what I'm saying to you now is you can go ahead and proceed. And the main reason you're going to go ahead and proceed quickly is because you're hoping to get this done and money exchanged hands and deeds before the court rules on it. Or maybe before the rest of the public finds out about it. But, I mean, that's about, all I have to say is that the director of the seller, agent should not have the right to review how the property is described, should not have the right to review on whether she's going to allow a delay when the delay is only in the benefit of the city finding out about this. Okay? Do you have any questions to me? But that's what I have for you. And if you continue to have another vote tonight, we'll be smiling at this time appealing, but this time we're going directly to the Attorney General's office. They have a separate office to deal specifically with. Not until we appeal to you first, unless we can show a patent of egregious.
Thank you. So let's go to somebody else.
Sure, sure, sure.
Until, yeah. Mr. Fiden, do you want a chance to rebut? I feel like I'm in a court of law now.
If my name was being used in vain, I would like a chance. Just so it's clear, so the city of Northampton was an applicant before you two years ago. Nothing to do with Emerson Way, nothing to do with anybody else. You issued a permit for us. We are now before you, and we were not an applicant for the Emerson Way special permit. We're now before you to amend our permit. Regardless, if you amend this permit tonight, regardless of what happens to the court case, we're changing the conditions and sell. We hope we sell it because we have a signed option or time purchase sale. But if that sale fell through because of litigation, anything else, we're still going to be selling it to somebody else. That's the way city council approved it. And so we would like these changes regardless of what happens. And so I don't know if you need to comment on the other project, but this project, this permit's valid regardless of what happens to Emerson Way.
So I, I, I sort of feel like you need to.
Yeah.
So this is not about this other project?
Yeah.
And, and as such, we do not have the ability to comment about this other project. So because of that, if you guys are here to talk about some other project, that's, has nothing to do with today. Head stop. Sit down, please. And I feel that you should respect this volunteer counsel's time enough to say what is the right time. And this, what is going on has nothing to do with this permit. And what's going on is disrespecting our time because we can't comment about this other project, nor do we know anything about a court case in Boston.
Mr. Taylor, if I may address you, because it is important.
So, Mr. Roth, hold on a sec. Please, please sit down one second. So I'm saying the only thing that is legitimate is they have a question about the process. Was the notification for this permit done in a legal way that works towards this hearing tonight? So that is legitimate and there.
I can speak to it.
So if you would, that would be great.
Can I make one other comment as well, which is that, um, at least one of these gentlemen tried to make a comment at the beginning of the hearing during open public comment. He said, no, it really to this project, so I don't think it's fair for us to now say it doesn't actually relate to this project. And I hear what you're saying, that a lot of this is outside the purview of a decision that we can make today. But procedurally, we already asked them not to, not to comment earlier, so.
But they did comment in this period.
Right, right.
Um, so just in terms of the notice, as with any public hearing notice for any project that comes before the planning board, um, the notice is spelled out clearly in state statute. We have to send notice to abutters of the project and then any abutters to those abutters that are also within 300 feet plus immediate lots across any street from a project. So it just surrounds, you know, like a U shape around the project and then the lots immediately cross. We actually do a much broader outreach because it's easier to run the computer model and just say 300 feet around a project. So it actually takes a whole circumference and grabs a whole lot more. And we also are required to put this posting in the state for two consecutive weeks. So all of that was done. We have the list of people that were notified and so that's the same for every project.
So, so that is not true, what you just said. If I have evidence, I've had a letter from her posted between her and Alan Seewell, the attorney today, just two days ago. These, these notices went out over 10, 15 days ago. Alan Seewell said he does not know for sure. He said, just two days ago, Carolyn Mish wrote to the attorney and said, have we properly notified these people? Alan Seewell said that we, I, I think so, but they didn't say for sure. Also, the 48, section 11 specifies what needs to be sent out in the way of notification. There's a reason there are fewer people here tonight. Everybody, I knocked on a few doors. Every one of those people came here tonight surprised to learn about what's going on. It doesn't make a clear statement of who the peremptee is on the notification. It doesn't make a clear statement of what the purpose of the, of the meeting is. And, and, and it's required by section 48, section 11. It spells out right here. And while Carolyn Mish is talking to Alan Seewell, who had the law wrong and I had to correct them on it, and I have a copy of the correspondence between us in which he quoted what he thought the law was, and I said to him, Alan, you're wrong. It doesn't say the subject property. It says specifically the line of.
Mr. Roth, I, I appreciate it and I think you're getting down into some details of the process that.
The notification is invalid and therefore this hearing cannot go forward.
I think it's a process that the planning department has used in the past. I've been part of that process also and been notified of these things. And I think whatever, what process has been used is something that's traditionally been effective in the past.
There's a state law that overrides custom. It's called 48, section 11.
We want to move forward with this hearing tonight to gather as much information as we can from the people who have sewn up about this hearing of these 10 lots.
And apologies.
Excuse me, and if a legal course is happening on an alternate route, then that will bear out in time. And the planning office and the applicant, the city of Northampton is well aware of that. But I really want us to move forward and hear from.
Just to address Mr. Taylor, I appreciate your time. I respect the fact that you are citizens doing, serving on your own time. I know and I really appreciate that, every one of you. And I do hope that you hear what I'm saying. It's costing me about $10,000 so far, an incredible amount of time of my personal time. And the only, the only intent of it was that so that when these hearings are held, people will have a right to be heard. Don't care what the decision is, people have, they're not here tonight because they weren't notified. None of the abutters of the conservation area for whom this is a very serious matter were notified. The only, and.
Thank you. Now can we move on to some other folks, okay?
I just wanted to say, I, I agree with Sam and I would hope that no one in the audience would take our time to talk about the litigation that is apparently pending in some court. would take our time to talk about the litigation that is apparently pending in some court. All we're here for is this application, and I don't want to take time, it's 10:15, listening to pros or cons of some other litigation.
I can answer just one question, and I'm perhaps the newest person to the board. Is there any deviation from the normal procedure that you use for notice for this hearing?
No, and so, no, we notify by postcards, we put in the, and then in addition to that, we post a yellow sign on the property, or the applicant's supposed to post a yellow sign on the property so that anybody in addition to those 300 foot, that ring, can also find out about it, and there's information about how to contact the city.
And I'm guessing you can send things out to this ring of people in this circumference, but you don't, you can't guarantee who opens their mail and who actually reads it and who actually, whether or not the post office delivers it as timely as we would hope? You don't have any control of that, right?
Okay.
My name's Bill Donad.
Bill, why don't you come on up to your podium, Bill? Now your comment's going to be about the three changes being asked.
Not about litigation, about the postcard. So my name's Bill Donad of 32 Woods Road, abutting this plan, and I never received a postcard. I found out about the meeting tonight purely by accident with somebody in the neighborhood, Mr. Gallian. Said, by the way, I was outside working the yard. He knows the meeting, and I said, hey, nothing's bothering. And I never got a postcard.
Okay.
I just want to let you know.
Only 10 people will notify.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak to the specifics of the changes being asked here today? Counselor?
Thank you. I guess we really do have a problem here. I've been going at this for at least two and a half to three weeks. Am I a happy counselor? No, I'm not. I am hearing so much about the miscommunication, and to me, that is very, very valuable. I want to thank the planning board, all the hours that you spend going through plans and everything, but as a city counselor, this is very hard for me. This is not an easy one. I just want to give a quick, quick little story, quick, about Emerson Way, Doug Cole and I, and all my abutters who worked tirelessly, tirelessly to make that project be what it is, and that was affordable with mix. I was not notified with the first meeting, which I find very heartbreaking because with Doug Cole, he worked with me, and all my abutters and beyond. And we would not be here today or looking at even a court case. Anyways, I'm here to say, as a city counselor, I am for affordable housing 100% and mix. I have some concerns about this plan. On looking at the driveways, are these all going to be common type driveways? So they're going to access one way into a B and then come out that way, correct? I'm also concerned about the gardens. I have a lot of concerns about that.
Sweet garden. Sweet rain garden.
Yes. And I know the area definitely. I have friends who live around there that are residents, and there's quite a bit of mosquitoes out there, so I have some concerns about mosquitoes and health issues here. So I need to know, how are we going to protect our residents who are going to be living there, which we hear so much about ticks, mosquitoes and everything today? So I'd like an answer for that, and I know you're probably going to say that the Department of Public Works would probably handle that situation and the Board of Health. I also have concerns about how much traffic do you think this will bring into that site? That's important for me, which I know that you can put a restriction to the Department of Public Works, correct, about traffic coming in and coming out. We are having serious problems since we have now a new road, Perk Street Road. Speeding has become a huge issue, and I'm concerned if we are having affordable housing and we have families with children, how do we keep them safe? What I'm asking for the planning board, if possible, because of all the development I've done for over 21 years working with the planning board, if we could have them somehow possibly, just like we did at the Ridge, where we have a covered up like bus stop area and protect the children off the road, for the plants with, you know, conserving the conservation land, we have a ribbon cutting coming up for the conservation land, and we are going to have our first bus walking tracks, which are going to keep my children off of Perk Street Road, which is heavily trafficked. So I want answers to that, but I am hoping, hoping, as a counselor, I don't ever want to go through something like this again. I am not going to blame the planning board for this or nothing, but I think it also is the responsibility of a contractor, a builder, to go to a counselor and say, you know what, I'd like to get together, let's have a meeting with residents. It never happened, and this is what's happened here, and I don't like it. And anyways, hopefully you can take some of my advices of keeping our families safe on Perk Street Road, looking at the drainage part of it and the water gardens, and saving trees is very important, and I'm hoping that we're not going to be knocking down a lot of trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I thought it was an interesting one. The bus, I don't think the bus yet, but did they stop at each one of these places?
No, they don't have some kind of stop express.
Is that going to be out? Or is it just?
No, the city usually does. The city, this full department. And now sometime, you know, with a larger subdivision, there may be, the board might look at where a stop goes, but not for A and R lot.
Okay. Please share your name and address.
Nathan Brown, 620 Burt's Pit Road.
You say Dave?
Dave, yeah. I was just wondering how many notices went out for this project to all the abutters? Do you know the number of cards that were sent out?
Dave, we've taken into consideration.
Yes or no?
No, we understand the issue about the process and the notification, but, and we all understand that very well amongst the board, that there may have been a hitch with that. We want to move forward to just discussing the plan, okay?
That's fine. I just wanted clarification on that. As far as the net zero, so you're saying those first three homes are going to be totally solar?
They're going to be solar, yes.
100% running off solar.
I'm sure it'll be.
Electrical opening. All right. That's all I have to say.
Dave, I'm sorry, what was your address again?
620 Burt's Pit Road.
620. Okay, thanks.
Evening. My name's David McCutcheon. I live at 263 Sylvester Road, Forts. Maybe start things off by saying that the trail that was built came out great, beautiful. Been downed a couple times. The concerns, issues I have with the plan offer tonight, the pond, it just seems like it, with kids and stuff like that, might be a little unsafe, perhaps a fence around it. I understand it's shallow, but when it has water in it, it doesn't matter if it's shallow or not, it's got water in it. Mosquitoes, I'll just leave it at that. The overall project type, the parking I've heard, the driving, whatnot. As I understand, 10 lots are sold. Three to Habitat, two to Tofino, one, two, and a butter, kind of as a swap. And four, do we know who the four are for the?
The planning board doesn't at this point, no.
Is it? Because you have a notice of subdivision approval, July 26th, for Emerson Way LLC. So I figured it would be his because he received a permission to transfer three of his duplex, affordable duplexes to this project. So I'm going to go under the assumption it's him. I'm sure maybe you can't say or something like that. So as a numbers gang, you've got 10 affordable lots in this project for the new project that you're seeking for an amendment on. And at this point right now, prior to Emerson moving his affordable over to Burt's Pit, that would make a total of 16 units, affordable units available, just these two projects.
No, I'm not sure I understand your use of the term affordable.
I'm just using what was on the map.
There are three affordable, proposed affordable units by Habitat for Humanity on this map on Burt's Pit Road.
Yeah, and there's other, okay, so, or the ones with the assessable. So in other words, we don't know which ones. It doesn't seem to be identified, but I'm saying there's 10 affordable properties at Burt's Pit, correct?
No.
Oh, they're not?
No, I think there's three that are targeted for Habitat for Humanity that will be affordable, but the others are market grade from what I understand.
I got you. Okay, so my mistake.
Totally.
Right, so I'll go to the other end of my map. Maybe I'm incorrect. If Emerson Way is able to do what he got the permit for and moves his six from Emerson to Burt's Bar, right?
Right.
That'll be six less. Are his affordable? I should have asked that first. Are his affordable in Emerson?
I don't.
No, low income. It was low income. He had a low income.
That was a different decision that was made.
You're looking at the total number of single family house lots on this property.
Right, right. Yeah, we're not concerned with what's going on in Emerson Way at this point.
Oh, no, I'm only saying because it's, is it not? If he does move there, the two blend, which here tonight to talk about Burt's Bar, and if he's, he got a permit from you folks for amendment approval to move six of his affordable units or duplex units over there, I thought that was part of what we're here tonight for. I'm not trying to get outside the fence like maybe we did a little earlier in discussions, but I thought it was part of it. I'm not trying to get out.
Were folks here during that discussion of Emerson Way? When we, Carolyn, do you want to summarize for how that was resolved?
Is it relevant to the agenda?
Yeah, in some ways it is.
The agenda is about, I'm going to wait, if I may. My understanding is that the agenda item is about a limited proposed change around drainage. The affordable housing at Emerson Way, something that I was not a part of, I was in the board and will be happy to consider, how is this relevant to the agenda item?
Yeah, so where do I bring it up?
So the other piece of it is it doesn't really much matter what or who buys these lots because your permit is about the lots that stays with the land. So if the prospective buyer buys it, then that may be one scenario, or some other buyer, if that deal falls through someone else, these lots that you're looking at would stay the same no matter who the buyer is.
Regardless of the price or the house built on.
All right, I'll give up on that. I just, what I read was the planning board approved the request to allocate six of the required eight affordable units from three duplex lots on Burt's Bar. I mean, it was just a permit that was there. I read it as it was, I read it for its face. It's going into this project, and if I can't question it or ask a question about it tonight, what other meeting would I attend? Seems like we're getting toward the tail end of the permitting here, so I don't think there's a time for me to attend it or address it. I hear what she's saying. She doesn't think it is. I don't know that it is either, but I'm just saying that.
So again, it's not relevant to the changes being asked here.
I hate to say so by the wayside. What I was going to say was if six of the lots that I read to you went to Burt's Pit, then it would be six lots or six living units in Emerson Way, that would no longer be.
Affordable.
Affordable. So six lots.
Right.
So we're here tonight to try, we're trying to supplement low income, and if we take six from Emerson, poof, they're gone. So part of what we're trying to do with this is to the contrary.
And I appreciate the concern. I'm not trying to.
One last thing. I was involved with the first offering of Burt's Bar, and it went south in a bad way. And I suffered financially and everything else, and I'm not trying to get on the bandwagon here for wine, but I don't want to see somebody else go through what I did when it failed miserably the first time. And you can ask Carolyn and Wayne what I'm out there about, I won't bring it up. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak to the three changes being offered at this site? Anyone besides someone who hasn't spoken yet? We want everybody to have a chance, please.
I'm Maggie McDonough. I don't live in Northampton, but I basically am director of Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity, and the technical changes that are being proposed by the city tonight on lots five, seven, and nine that we have a purchase and sale agreement for, we're in support of those changes, that they would help us with the solar access for those and allow us to create one common driveway for the three houses we're going to be building rather than having to figure it out with the other budding neighbors. So we, I wanted to just speak briefly to that and that we were doing that in conjunction with, the pre-development work in conjunction with the neighbors developing the other lots, and that that would be a positive thing for the development for us.
I agree.
I have Ganzelaki, 788 Burt's Pit Road. My concerns are basically four lots, five, seven, and nine. I live directly across the street from that. So to steal a comment from a gentleman from the previous presentation, the three words he used are noise, license, privacy. So these are driveways, which I wasn't sure when I saw the map, so that's great, but I also heard someone talking about a homeowners association, and I hadn't heard that before. So is that part? I don't, I didn't understand that. So if somebody can clarify that, that would be great. I'm all for the trees, especially along the street, and we love what we look at now, and I'm all 100% for solar, but if we can somehow in the planning maintain, that would help with our privacy and somehow marry that with the option for solar, we really, we'd appreciate it for those of us that live right across the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have just addressed two items that came up. One was the homeowners association. Primary reason to have that is because we have a centralized drainage system, which benefits all people in the project that it would have to be owned and maintained and operated by someone, so homeowners association will be created primarily for the operation maintenance of the drainage system. And one other quick item was brought up, concern regarding mosquitoes and the basins that were proposed. These basins are designed to totally drain between rainstorms, so they will be totally dry a short period after a rainstorm has ceased to add water.
So in terms of providing any kind of security around them, you don't think that's a necessity?
No, again, these are shallow basins, and in a 100-year storm, which we haven't seen since 1936, we would be about 18 inches deep, and it's a very shallow area. It's not something that'll fall into the water. You'd have to wade into it, and it's getting very gradual, gradual slope into it.
Anyone else? Counselor, I think, well?
I just want to do a very, very quick Habitat. You did come up and speak about it. I think it's very critical that the neighbors work with Habitat and be very careful here how the houses are being made. For the first time in my For the first time in my work, we've had some problems with having a prefab home brought in, and it's a significant difference than what I have on West Hampton Road with Habitat. So I'm hoping that Habitat will look at that very carefully. And I also want to say from my heart that I got many, many calls with the first hearing that a comment was made, well, affordable, that they won't mind moving into an area I mind, because I think no matter where we have a mix, it is very, very important where they live and that they are part of the community. And when I heard that that comment was made here in planning, I wish I was here because that was very heartbreaking.
Thank you.
I'm Richard Adewitsen, the majority or managing manager of Emerson Way. I try to be brief because I know it's very late. I've been in the city for 30 years doing business. We've done quality projects. Emerson Way is a quality, arguably the nicest residential community in Northampton. We've done nice job in Florence Marketplace. We've been major contributors to the Business Improvement District, the Downtown Northampton Association. My group along with Smith College are the two largest donors to downtown Northampton. We've done that for the last decade. In terms of this specific approval that we're seeking, we redesigned the drainage to avoid the sequencing that was impractical. We formed a homeowners association because there's driveway maintenance and there'll be drainage maintenance, so it makes sense from an administrative point of view to have sort of a lightweight homeowners association.
Excuse me for one minute. When you say "we," are you speaking for the city of Northampton, the applicant, or?
I'm presuming that we're going to buy the property from Emerson Way.
The four units?
The four lots.
Okay.
And we will not close on those lots till the litigation with Mr. Roth is settled one way or the other. We're very pleased to be working with.
Thank you.
We're very pleased to be working with Megan and Habitat. We've gone through a lot of gyrations. In effect, it's a joint venture of sorts. We're subsidizing site plan costs for Habitat to make it more affordable. We're a private developer. I think this is the first affordable home still without any public assistance. We're also proud of that. And we did try to have a meeting with the neighbors last Thursday. We sent out an email to the neighbors, to Mary Ann, and no one showed up. And we asked them to invite anybody they wanted. They could have any agenda that we want. So we try to be as transparent and as open and willing to talk as we possibly can. And if we are successful and we do get approvals, we'll maintain that attitude. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll try to repeat this one. I want to address specifically the plan. If you draw a circle, can we get the plan up there? Where you can see the houses? Yeah. I want the one that shows the current. Okay. So my concern again is density. I think that was a concern that was originally expressed. If you draw a circle. If you draw a circle. This was the original plan, right? Because why not? No, I want the current one. If you draw a circle around the five homes in the middle, the three that border the mosquito pond and the two above it, it's about 33,000 feet, and that's what the zoning is on the outside of the street. It's 80,000. So you could fit two, and I would say, wow, they're 10 units, you know? But you know what it is now? Everything, you have to watch very carefully anything Wayne might do, particularly in small letters, okay? But you notice that now it says "single family with an accessory apartment." You know what that's called? Duplex, okay? Duplex. So we've gone from someplace that was intact and overloaded and let's think, why don't we add three to four more apartments?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Carolyn, is it, is it my, I think I learned at the last meeting that every house in Northampton has an accessory apartment by right?
That's right. You could do an accessory apartment by right in every single-family house.
Oh, so this isn't unique? This is right, right?
And these lots were created as part of, again, sort of at the beginning, as part of a cluster. So you're clustering the units in one area to protect.
And the other thing is the drainage plan is based upon these homes, these are the market buyer homes and the rest of a footprint of 625 feet. Now that's smaller, the houses for Habitat. You know why? Because if you put a bigger footprint on there, more rain gets covered up, more rain gets directed. So all of these houses are smaller than the one bedroom. I wonder how that happened? Thank you.
Very quick, restrict your time. Just, I had spoken with Carolyn, and she had talked about the size of the lots, and she said that the size of these lots, proposed lots for this area on Burt's Bog subdivision were comparable to the community, but that is entirely incorrect. If you actually looked at the map, it's around the community, immediate around it, the areas are, the acreage is doubled to three times what is being allotted for these divisions. The land can't handle it. That's my objection. It's conservation land, was acquired because it's sensitive land, and it's just a disaster for the living things in there. Thank you all for your time, and I appreciate, sorry if I took up too much of your time, but trust me, it's nothing like what I went through for the last year, just trying to get people heard. And there aren't more people here today because they want to hear. I would ask you to delay until the other people are notified, and you can have their inputs because they have a lot to say.
Thank you. Anyone else before we return to the board for questions and discussion? All right. Well, again, Carolyn reminded me this was originally a cluster zoning, and the reason we did that is to protect all of that open space. It's part of this big project to allow these, you know, it's one of the goals of the city in Northampton. Any questions about the three items that we're looking at here? The mosquito. Not the, no, right, just the repositioning of the homes, the changing of the lots five, seven, and nine. No? Please turn forward.
Yep.
Looks like we're looking at.
Yep. Some of the issues raised by the public, the mosquitoes.
I think.
It sounds like the water drains out.
Yeah.
And it's wet.
Jabaggy area, and some of the land is opened up, perhaps there'll be more.
They'd get rid of mosquitoes in my house up here.
I think it's pretty straightforward if we ignore everything having to do with the Emerson Way development and the litigation. This is pretty straightforward. I'm prepared to vote.
So do I.
I moved to close public comment.
I just want to read, I mean, you don't have to have a public comment, a staff comment about DPW comments.
Yeah, let's keep the public comment. Just a little bit, so we make sure we can ask some questions of the applicant and his engineer. So please, Carolyn.
Okay, so there's a, there's some, this has a separate stormwater permit that was issued, so they, there are notes on here about grading and phasing relative to rain gardens, or it's just cleaning up the notes. So I think overall, DPW wants to see revised plans incorporating any changes that are made and cleaning up the labels on the plans prior to permitting. And they want to show stabilization of construction entrances indicated at the proposed driveway locations, that they remain in effect until the driveway is completed. And then some water utility lots, I'm sorry. I thought there was another item in here about the site, but that's basically if they want revised plans and that show tweaks to the labeling on the plan sheets and then construction, driveway tracking where the construction may be remaining in place till the end of the driveway.
And like the previous permit, because of these three retention ponds, rain gardens, is there a maintenance plan for them that's filed with the DPW?
Yeah, so because there's a separate stormwater permit, that path is already, that's required as part of that permit to maintain compliance with that. So there's a whole number requirement in those conditions.
The applicant spoke a little bit about the specimen trees and the net zero, and if they took down a tree to be net zero, they would get a waiver, so it's not that to replace those trees or pay into the mitigation. I think we're not addressing that, but at least my assumption is we're not addressing that if those homeowners comes back, it would be through a special permit. Okay, you know, certainly every development like this and the change, wasn't drastic changes to the driveway, but traffic was addressed at the original permitting of this situation, even though that did come up tonight. We're always concerned about traffic, but I think it's been addressed already during the original permit. And as we heard about the bus shelter, you know, that's something that doesn't happen out of a subdivision this size, and I don't even know whether the, it's within the range of the schools, certainly some of them are, some not. So bus shelter, again, is kind of out of our hand. Okie doke. Any other questions by anyone before we hear our motion?
And there, so I had some recommended conditions in my staff report about, mostly about the tree protection process and having inspections prior to that, prior to starting construction, and then the conditions that would basically have the applicant comply with the Arbus report about pruning and treating some of the trees on site to maintain their health, not just during construction, but for the long term. And then relative to prior certificate of occupancy, that the tree replacements be completed in compliance with the zoning, and that asphalt for the driveway locations and stormwater infrastructure be submitted. Also, they're need to report the easements and maintenance agreements relative to the driveways in addition to the stormwater.
Okay, so we'll make a motion in accepting the conditions of both the DPW and the staff report.
And just one other comment, I know there were a couple of people, just so you know, a couple of people who mentioned that they weren't notified, two of them in particular, and you noticed, were well outside the 500-foot ring, even up to 1,000 feet from the project. So we would not be notifying people who are beyond 300 feet. So both those people were beyond the 300 feet.
Make a motion? I'll first do, let's see, close the public hearing.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? All right, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Make another motion. Move that we approve the site plan amendment for drainage and lot layout for MAP ID 29-10, 617, and 36, that 410, 417, with the, including the recommendations of staff that have been recited.
Any discussion about the motion? All right, all in favor?
Yeah.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
I live across the street from this.
Let's do it. I only appreciate all the work you put into it.
Likewise, I appreciate your questions and all of your, so you form a speak over there.
Just going circles back.
Yeah, it's so complicated, and we walk out of the room.
Please bring your conversation topside and start another hearing. Everyone hold this.
I want to make a comment about something that's on the agenda. I just want to state my gratitude to Carolyn and to Wayne for being so.
Hang in there.
Hang it in there.
That's all.
Please record, put that in official record.
My comment too is that unfortunately, the board is served sometimes. That's just part of our role.
But that point is that I think what they also can never not then be a little push back.
Yep.
We, we, we are.
All right, let's move forward. Thank you, Cheryl.
I hear you, we're currently.
I know, I know, I know.
Gentlemen, it's your team all here. Life is hard, isn't it?
Oh, no.
We can make this as brief as we can.
Yes.
We're ready for you.
Anybody over there have a cert camp in or something?
We have a glass facing.
I have a Robert Crowe of order.
I think that's our only issue.
Oh, my God.
I thought you had commanding control from up there.
If I remember correctly, it was the applicant who suggested we hold this tonight, even though we know it's going to be this late.
You said it was. I remember that.
That was our hope too.
We trust you.
It's okay. I hope you saw it every night.
I feel like my first meeting, y'all said she's not like this.
That's you, my dear.
Me, not me.
You, who is this?
No, no.
Yeah, it's like a push-up kit. Of course they get it, I know.
Maybe they'll buy outside. Well then. Well then, we'd like to open a 9 o'clock public hearing for a continuation of a continuation of a major site plan for 34,000-plus square feet of new mixed commercial buildings with drive-through and related site development. Special permit for more than one curb cut, 301 and 303, King Street, 85 East, 24B, 70, 71, 81.
Carolyn, so all we're talking about this one is regarding the curb cut. Is that it? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, you, there was a final stormwater permit that had been issued. There were some minor changes to the plan because you all asked for a pedestrian access in the other building, and then. And then I had also noted there was an issue about the renderings that they had shown with films. Yeah. But yes, the curb, there was an issue about the right-in, right-out on that extra driveway because we hadn't worked out the details. But in the intervening two weeks, almost every day, we've been talking about that curb cut. So I think we've figured it, that one out. So yes, you can certainly get closure on that.
All right, let's see, oh, quickly I can do this. My name is Peter LaPointe, I'm a project manager for the Colvest Group. And Dana, does, does this have a, the detail?
Been the last sheet, 11.
There you go.
Back, 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 one more. There you go. Oh, yeah, right there.
All right.
See on the right-hand side? Can you zoom in?
Yeah, can we load this up? The request was to create a right-in, right-out. What we started with was the little rumble strip island that's in, out of Dunkin' Donuts, out to Dan. And Dave Valetta wasn't happy with that. He wanted something more obstructive. What we've ended up with is a granite curb island, literally with vertical curb on one side. The rest of it is slope mountable curb. And it's concrete infilled. And it's larger and more bell-shaped than the straight curb at Dunkin' Donuts. So it forces you to turn right and makes it really uncomfortable to try to take a left in. I'm not saying somebody with a Ford Explorer couldn't do it. But it might damage its shocks or tie rods in the process.
And Mr. Valetta has seen this?
Yes. The other issue we had, if we can go back to the site plan, is show that sidewalk. One of the requests was that we add a crosswalk between the existing building that Bay State Health is in, at, in Bay State Dental at 325 King, and the proposed building at 303 King. And there's, we've added, the pavement marking crosswalk is right there between the two buildings going from sidewalk to sidewalk. And then it obviously then, it obviously then interconnects with the rest of the sidewalk system carrying it back out to the street.
Thank you.
Those, I think, were the two big site issues. As Carolyn said, we do have our stormwater permit approval. I think with, we've got our traffic engineer here if there's questions, but he and Dave Valetta have been in constant contact talking about upgrades to that traffic signal at Barrett Street and what we needed to do, what he expected to see. And I think we finally reached a meeting of the minds on that, which eliminated the traffic signal. I didn't hear any other, any additional issues about landscaping, so I didn't ask anybody from Berkshire to sign to be here. I felt we were in pretty good shape. We were pretty good shape with utilities, except for a question you or Dave had asked about the gas company and their moratorium. They had committed to us that we were grandfathered. And I, I don't know that we have. Yeah, please. Very big propane. The, I don't know that there were any remaining issues with the layout, the sidewalks, the landscaping, the bike paths, the bike.
And just so you know, the proposed conditions that I sent to you and staff memo also went to the applicant, so they're aware of all of those lists. And it just incorporates the agreements that were made about the traffic that we've been working on for.
And they were gonna spec out on the revised plans another bike parking area, I think? We were sighing.
There was one that, that wasn't labeled. That's just one in the corner here. So we added the label, that's what was missing. It was not clear.
And we, I think those were all of our issues except your issue about glazing.
And that's just a clarification, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I guess if you, right, the zoning says that, you know, they have to be transparent windows, so.
When you go to the.
It wasn't there on the map.
Yeah, architectural owners.
You say they have to be so deep too, so you could display things in them?
Well, they're meant to be display windows, not just advertising windows.
There's hanging signs.
Not July approaches.
Like display windows, like Macy's Christmas sign?
Sure. Or like, or a big coffee cup, you know, that makes you wanna come in and drink a giant slurpee. I do, right now.
Here's our issue, the storefront entry door. And we're talking specifically about the building at the front of the site. Very old school, I'm looking for a board.
I would.
So the, the front door is actually oriented toward the interior of the property and facing the building in back. The building in back is facing King Street.
So this is, this is the King Street elevation here, and this is the, the building that's actually focusing, if you will, into these parking lot, which is where your retailers and your storefronts will be. And this shows it as well from the other angle. You can see Greenfield Savings here. But then this is what we have as the facade that's facing King Street right now, which is, as you know, is linked by the drive-through. There are doors and windows, those are true windows, you know, with depth to them. However, because this is the, what we would call the backup house area for the retailers that will be going in here, typically that's where they have their stock rooms and their clothing rooms and things of that nature. So what we were proposing is that the windows along this facade be spandrel glass, so that you would not see. The, no, I'm just gonna stand behind, not across, sorry. So you would not see the, the stock that's being stocked by those retailers in that.
And in the back room, you're looking at deliveries that he hasn't put in the shelf yet, the mop, sink and mop, the cleaning supplies, the employees changing area. That's at the back of the house. It's gotta be someplace. You're not gonna put it out in front with the cash registers or the main entry door or whatever else you have. So what we were proposing to do was use a product called spandrel glass, which isn't going to crack in the heat and is opaque, so you can't see through it. But actually does manage to let some light through into the, into the space because they are real windows.
Yeah, I'll also add too, I think the, the requirement to the code is a 60% of windows along the facade. If it's within 12 feet of the buffer, and we're much further back from the buffer, we have a 75% openings of windows in that facade. So we've certainly done a little bit better with the, the windows and the fenestration. But based on how the building is gonna be used, you know, we do have, we are asking for spandrel glass.
It is a retail building, that is our intent, with the exception of a first tenant, which is Starbucks, and their back room is back there. And that's, that's not something you wanna look at as you drive by on King Street. We would prefer that those back windows facing King Street be spandrel glass. And we think the board has the ability to do that. You, you have the ability to tell us how much, what portion, or allow us to shade or film or use opaque glass for all of those windows if you so choose.
Were those the windows you were speaking in?
Yeah, yeah.
To me, so the intent of the zoning is to make King Street as walkable and pleasurable for pedestrians as possible. So ideally, Starbucks' front door would be on King Street, and the drive-through would have been around the back, right? So that we would see that. So now what we're gonna see, the pedestrians and even people driving by are gonna see more cars, and they're gonna see blank glass.
Well, you are gonna see the drive-through. We'll have landscaping in front of that, which partially obscures the cars that do line up in the drive-through. But that is the back wall of the building. In, although the architect has dressed it up with windows and doors and awnings and made it look like storefronts and made it look appealing, it still is where the gas meters are and the electric meters are and the menu board for Starbucks is. They have to be someplace on that building.
So you're proposing the bottom drawing, or it's the same one?
Same one, that's just.
This is the, this is the facade facing the parking lot?
So these are the, those are the storefront entrances.
Okay, so it's the one that's standing on the chair.
The corner there, Devon. It's this here, that's correct.
Carolyn, those windows, please do that properly.
No, 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 so it just okay. So the idea was to have the window, transparent windows along King Street as if you're not necessarily in the space. Of course, their front is oriented to the parking lot, so those are all gonna be whatever windows they want. The, the question is, are you okay with opaque or semi-opaque? Or can there be just some of those, some portion of those be real display windows that then are backed by something where you could hide the whole, you know, broom closet or utility room?
Well, it's, it's everything you would normally put in the back room of a store. I hadn't thought of this, but Frank pointed it out yesterday. There's electrical gear back there, there's plumbing back there, there's.
Right, but what we're suggesting is, of course you do that, but you have a, you have a little closet, more or less, at the window that gives you 12 inches, 14 inches, whatever, to provide some kind of display there that would, that mightage up that space for people to just not look.
If I may, just add, and I, and I completely understand what the regulation, you know, is, is there and what it's, why it's there. You know, one of the things that I thought when, when reading the regulation is that because when you're walking down a sidewalk, you do wanna see the display windows. It's a little unique in this case because the sidewalk is out here, then we have a landscape buffer, then we have a drive-through lane, and then we have the building itself. So it's really not the same effect as if you're walking in downtown, walking past windows and then have spandrel glass there. You're quite a good distance away from the building, so.
I think it's a pretty elegant way of handling, to keep the visual appeal consistent with what we're trying to do in, in King Street while accommodating the fact that it's oriented the way that it is. I mean, I, because the other thing too is it's, you know, display windows that are in between that tree buffer and the drive-through lane strikes me as. I, the other thing too is they, they seem like they might be, if we ask them to set something like that up, they might be subject to some benign neglect and not be maintain, you know, and everybody's gonna be faces, right?
I think the biggest issue is that you just, you just need to know and make that decision specifically, so that you, you understand that's what, that's what they're doing.
I was thinking the same thing, that this gentleman said that there's the buffer zone and trees and the driveway, and the cars sit there parked there. He's always gonna be looking at these windows.
We honestly want a hurried pedestrian in that specific spot in between, right, anyway, right? Like that's.
The drive.
Yeah.
There's not a, there's not an adequate sidewalk.
The landscape buffer, that's the sidewalk. This is the drive-through. And these are the sidewalk along the back.
Oh, the driveway is here, right?
And this is the drive-through.
Yeah, I don't want.
And you're right, if you make them do it, they may just stick a something in there that gets dusty and pays out.
There's gonna be pumpkin latte all year long.
All year long, it's gonna be. Crackers sold for pumpkin latte in July, that we won't know what to do with ourselves.
Yeah, let me just say something, I mean, we, we've seen things like that where there's display windows, and what it becomes is it becomes a management headache to try to get, you know, because we get complaints from the tenant, and we go to the tenant, say, listen, can you, I mean, it's, it's really, it's hard. And this is a, this is a way to make the whole thing neat, always looks nice. You can, you can tell by our project at 325, where Bay State is, the landscape in there is beautiful, we always maintain it, and that's what this will become.
So I, I don't have a problem. Well, I, there's not always cars in front of the building, right? There's not always a car in the drive-through, even though Starbucks is a very popular place.
There's gonna be trees though.
Well, but there's gonna be trees, but trees grow up, you're gonna see right through those trees. You're gonna see gas meters, you're gonna, you're gonna be looking at the back of a building. Just so we're all aware of that. 10 years from now, that's what you're gonna be looking at.
We approve that on the.
Yeah.
But that, that, yeah, maybe that's the big issue, that either we're not okay with it hoping.
Well, if we're.
But, and so if we are, then let's just embrace that and have it look as good as we're gonna get so far.
I think if you force them to make it a display closet, it's gonna, he's gonna be chasing.
Well, you know, the irony is, people are gonna be there waiting for their latte, and they'll have a long time to look at like the mouse droppings and the. Not saying there would be, I'm trying to.
I haven't seen that.
All right. So before we do anything else, this is a public hearing, to continuation. Is there, we must open it up to the public? Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor or against this proposal?
They're all in favor, I think.
Yeah, I feel like this is a favor for the crowd.
Okay.
I move to close public hearing.
No, I already did.
I must think about it. Okay, any discussion on closing the public hearing? All right, all those in favor?
Yeah.
You can end this again. All right, so, any more discussions before we comment, observations, before we hear a motion? Did we, we, there's a lot of conditions.
Yeah, so do you want me to read them? You've read them? The applicant's read them, you've read them.
I move to, did we approve the major site plan for 34,000-plus square feet of new mixed commercial building with drive-through and related site development? Special permit for more than one curb cut, 301 with 303 King Street, North Hampton, MAP ID 24B, 7D, 7B1, and 81, with the listed conditions.
Second.
What about the windows, mouse droppings or?
As presented with the opaque.
The motion.
What is it called?
Spandrel.
Spandrel glass.
Spandrel glass.
The motion is both for a special, a major site plan and a special permit, but we're all doing it in one.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion about this? All right, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Are you opposed? Okay. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Have a good night's sleep tonight.
The meeting?
Hold on, hold on.
I mean, I, I move to approve all the, all of the minutes we all read.
Yep. Just hold on, let's see what Carolyn has for us. It's not gonna be but another four minutes.
I have an A and R. It was ready to go, but I never got to go upstairs after the zoning board except to get water. So it's on Milton Street, across from my school, Riverside Alphabert Side Drive. It's a 15-foot wide loft, being carved off of an existing single house. I can show you on the screen if you.
It looks good.
It's on Milton, Milton. And we can't say no anymore.
Yeah, right, say it. Great, proof.
Motion to approve the A and R.
And then the only other thing I have are the three minutes. If you had a chance, we could just, or we could pump them to the next meeting.
Fully written, you're agreed.
You know, I like the time, kind of, the minutes.
I think a different call, that's what we need.
I would like them to be 60% opaque.
Only crazy salary, right?
I thought they were all.
Over time, right? Overtime.
Let's consider overtime.
I hope we took all the minutes.
Second. Terry? No.
All favor?
Yes.
There you go.
See, they're good.
And then, that's it, I don't have anything else.
I, I would pay overtime today, no?
I, I move to close the, close maybe.
I'm gonna be adjourned in seconds.
Second. Anybody opposed? Thanks, everybody, for hanging in there.